When you pull yours, Mike.
Does it?
No, I'm kidding.
I'm going to call the Select Board meeting for Monday, January 6, 2025, back to order, and announce that we will be going into executive session, and we will not return before 6:00 P. M. Could I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to enter executive session for item A pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with all non-union personnel and to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, all. And item B pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 21A7, to comply with or act on the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and any requirements. The open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 21F and G, to review, approve, and or discuss the possible release of executive session meeting minutes dated June 26, 2023, August 19, 2024, October 15, 2024, October 28, 2024, November 4, 2024, November 25, 2024, and December 9, 2024.
Second.
All in favor, Michael?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And Pete?
Aye.
And I'm in, a five-zero. We're good? Thanks, Jamie. Good evening, I'm going to call the Select Board meeting for Monday, January 6, 2025, back to order. We were in executive session earlier, and we took action on item B to approve but not release the minutes, the executive session minutes, and no action on item A. And then, as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the Chair prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing no one, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the government of our country, to the nation, to the God, and to the people of this world, to the breathing of justice.
And before we go to public comment, I just want to note passing of Jack Driscoll, who is Robin Kelly's dad, and just acknowledge passing and that we offer our deepest sympathies to Robin and her family. And Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And also, further to what I commented last week about the passing of Albert Ranio, there are arrangements that have been made, and they sound a little odd, so I'm just going to make sure that everybody understands. Both the visitation and the funeral mass will be at Holy Trinity. The visitation is indeed going to be there, but it's at a side door, it's from 9:00 to 11:00, and it will be followed by the funeral mass. And the public is welcome.
Thank you, Don. And before I go to the public, I'll just ask if there's any staff here that wants to -- we're looking at a new public comment policy in force tonight, so any staff who would like to make any announcements, you can go first if you'd like to, or you can wait till after public comment.
Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director. I don't have anything, but it's going to be the first person to make a public -- sorry. I just actually wanted to remind you that we have quite a few events coming up, most notably, one of our activities with the Council on Aging is the Volunteer Fair, and there is an email and information going out about that. Now, this is not, I just wanted to clarify, not information on filling boards and committees, although people are welcome. This is about more of the community center helping out at Habitat for Humanity, whatever. So people were asking specifically if information would be available, and although we always have information, it is not specifically focused on filling towns and board committees and things like that. So, thank you, and I loved being first. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeff?
Am I an employee or a staff?
I think you're our --
Special Town employee.
Okay, great. So I'll continue, I'll be second. Office hours, Select Board office hours will resume in January. I just haven't picked a time and a location yet, and hopefully Select Board Member McCaskill will continue to join. Number one, and number two, I was asked by two extremely important people regarding closed captioning of our live broadcast here. So, Mom and Dad, yes, we do have closed captioning. I'm not sure how to get it from your end, but the town does provide it to all regulatory boards. And, one more, Jamie, regulatory and?
COA updates.
And COA monthly updates are all closed captioned. So, there you go, Mom and Dad.
Thank you, Jeff.
If you're going to segue into something like that, Jamie Goodwin, Harwich Channel Station Manager. If Bob wants me to come over and show him, I will. A few months ago, I was before you to tell you about the process of the town going HD with our Channel 8, our station. Comcast had initiated that conversation in August. I met with our town administrator in September to discuss that project, and I have since talked to two engineers from Comcast, and it's a full go, we should be HD. And what they say Comcast says is 90 days, so don't hold me to that, but we should be seeing an HD Channel 8 before the end of this calendar year, so.
So, Jamie, will we have makeup and everything before we get on?
No, I mean, you're going to have to really --
This is not a good-looking group, man.
We're all going to have to think a little more about our parents, I guess.
Just checking. Just checking. Oh, man.
For the record, when you watch it on YouTube or On Demand link, or on Roku TV or Apple TV, that is HD. Only the Comcast Channel 8 is standard.
Thank you.
So we're already ugly.
Yeah, it's not going to get better.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I have two things in mind I'd like to comment on. Actually, one's a comment and one's I'd like to read the letter I think you all received today. The first is, I wondered if anything is moving forward regarding a fellow to manage the tree warden. Has there been any further consideration of that since we last talked about it?
So, actually, I was just going through all my stuff last night and pulled that aside to follow up on the status of the tree ward.
Well, thought I'd ask, since preservation is my theme tonight. The second is the Baptist church, and I guess the, for clarity, I'd just like to read the letter I sent you, if I may, for the record.
Sure.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I am concerned about how things got handed off at the HDHC last week as regards the Baptist church, particularly because at age 14, I participated in the demolition of the Exchange Building. It's hard for me to see how another such demolition could happen in Harwich. The town voted for preservation. Clearly, the PNS was improperly worded. Perhaps it was written by Davenport and not given adequate review. Yet someone signed it. Residents should now expect some shared forensic action to be undertaken by your board, the town administrator and town council. Mistakes should be made public, and Davenport should get a request for revised PNS. Should the company be willing to acknowledge that it made a contract with the public writ large, we will see how much respect Davenport Company holds for our town. It is my hope that any forthcoming request of Davenport Company to exhibit any goodwill towards Harwich would be scheduled ahead of the second agenda placement by HDHC. The Baptist church does not lie within a town designated historic district. The best we can expect from HDHC is a demolition delay, my judgment, which would fall right into Davenport's lap, as the company needs design time. In any event, Davenport needs to be encouraged to find architects experienced in preservation, not demolition. I had one other part of that letter which I'll leave out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comments?
Charles Gruska, 6 T. Berry Ave., Harwich. Just some comments as a follow-up to the discussion of the Select Board at your November 25th meeting, and my December 3rd follow-up letter to you regarding the funding formula for the Monomoy Regional School District. Last week, I did a couple of things at the end of the week. I inquired of one of your board members where we are operating as a town in relation to the levy limit, received an answer that we're about $138,000 or so within the levy limit, razor-thin margin, scary number to me. I also reviewed the Monomoy Regional School District chart of potential upcoming capital projects for the next five-plus years projecting into the future. And the two of those activities confirmed my concerns about the ability of the town of Harwich to support the Monomoy assessment, especially as we continue to add special capital monies into that budget as a result of the aging of the buildings within the district. As you know, under the current formula, Harwich will be picking up about 75% of any regional capital costs and 100% of any capital costs involved with the Harwich Elementary School. What I see is going to happen, and saying for a long time, the capital part of the budget is going to put pressure on the instructional operating cost part of the budget. The capital part of the budget is fixed, it's not discretionary, the school committee can't say at some point, "We're not going to pay the debt payments this year," or "We're going to reduce the debt payments." The only place they're going to have to turn is going to be in the instructional operating cost section of the budget. That's where the rubber hits the road for the quality of the educational experience of the students. That's what my experience tells me, without flinching, the most important part of the budget for the students and their education is the instructional operating costs of the budget. That right now, under the, in the breakout of our budget, that is also the only part of the budget that really correlates directly with student enrollment. Student enrollment is driving every component of the Monomoy budget, as you know. So, as a result, as an individual taxpayer who's one of the strongest advocates for the Monomoy district, as you know, someone who's devoted hours of time volunteering services to the district, I fully appreciate and support the need for all of the capital projects that are on the list. However, I cannot support the town approving any future regional capital projects for the Monomoy district at a rate of 75% to Harwich, when our town represents only 45% of the property valuation, taxation on which is the main funding source for the schools, and 67% of the total population of the two towns. Unlike instructional operating costs, capital costs are not directly related to student enrollment and should not be calculated against that standard. Think of this, no matter how many students from each town attend the middle school and the high school, the cost of the regional capital projects would not change. No matter how many students were from Harwich, or how many were from Chatham, or what the total number was, it's going to cost, the contractor's going to charge us the same amount to side the middle school, the same amount to put a roof on the middle school, the same amount to replace the turf field and track at the high school. When Chatham asks to use the middle school for its town meetings, the district doesn't say to Chatham, "You can have 25% of the seating capacity of the auditorium," because that's how much, that's the percentage of the maintenance of that building that you support through the funding formula. They just had the first night, Chatham, they used the middle school for a venue for that wonderful, marvelous event. The district didn't say, "You can only use 25% of the parking spaces, you can only use 25% of the building for use in that venue." The middle school and the high school are 100%, Chatham's middle school and Harwich's middle school, and same thing with the high school, and they should share more equitably in the maintenance and operation capital expenses, from my perspective. I would like to see the, I don't know where things are going with regard to discussions with Chatham on the formula, haven't heard a report too much about that. I would like to see the town take a position to just say, "We're not going to fund any future capital projects, regional district capital projects, under the current formula."
And so, I'm just going to stop you there for a minute, because in December, I think it was November, December 16th meeting, we talked about initiating another conversation, so we are working on that.
That's great. And also, at the November 25th meeting, there was some thought thrown out about perhaps an advisory article for the warrant. And I initially didn't think that was a good idea, but when I think of it, I think it would be a good idea. I don't know if it's allowable or technically possible, to have an advisory question to the towns, asking, "Should Harwich continue to fund future capital projects, district projects, under the current existing funding formula?" I think it'd be a great way, with that crowd there, to educate the public, because it's a matter that requires a lot of education, and most people aren't aware of the details of this, a great way to educate the public, and it would give the board some direction. Either the town doesn't want, the town is fine with the way things are, move on, or additional ammunition with verification, support, whatever it is that you need in discussion with the other town. Finally, I just want to say, whether you go that route or not, while you have people from the district administration tonight for an agenda item on the meeting, and I hope to leave this meeting with a much clearer understanding of what the issues are about the air quality, mold issues and all, at the middle school, which seemed to surface over the weekend on social media. I didn't, from reading Chronicle articles and all, I didn't get a sense there were those level of issues, and I know we've got a superintendent who's really strong on infectious diseases, who, you know, gave us the best quality air during COVID that any school system had anywhere, because he and Rick Travers were right on top of the ventilation and all, but evidently there are issues that we're going to hear about tonight. But I hope while you have them here, you'll ask them, encourage them, to have the school committee bring forward to the town, to you and the town, a school budget that includes all of the identified needs of the district. In recent years, they have come as close as any school committee that I know to doing that, and I think it's more important than ever for you and all Harwich residents to know the exact fiscal needs of the district in order to continue to provide the educational experience for its students that has made it a school system that's envied by others, retains most of its students within the district, and acts as a magnet attracting numerous students from other communities to attend via school choice. Thank you for your consideration and the opportunity to share my thoughts with you.
Thank you, Mr. Gruska. Anybody else for public comment? Okay. Hearing nobody, we can go on to weekly briefing.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members, and everybody here. Happy New Year. The latest update from Robert Behauer on Phase 3 sewer extension is they remain in and around the area of Chestnut Lane. They expect that work period to extend from January 6 through January 17, and so, no real change there. All traffic patterns and prohibitions are still in place, and again, we expect that work to continue on Chestnut Lane through at least until January 17. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Select Board meeting minutes from December 16, 2024.
Second.
Moved to seconded. Any discussion? Don?
While we're on them, since it's January 6 right now, and these are the minutes for December 16, embedded in those minutes are two requests, the, how they arrived at the free cash number. Mr. Kirk, you were going to give that to both us and the Finance Committee. And the second one had to do with the Gulf Special Purpose Funds.
Yeah, all that info, yeah.
To see what comes into it and what comes out of it, because if that's going to be used as a rollover fund that's presumptive to be able to help pay off bonding fees incrementally, I'd like to know how it's been used over the last five years, and what kind of money is in it.
And actually, there was another request, I think it was Pete who made it about quarter two from last year as opposed to this year, right?
Right. Quarter comparisons. So, there's a number of asks in this.
Right. Anything else? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero. And now, committee presentations, the Treasure Chest Committee? Good evening. Yep, that's fine.
Good evening. I'm Ellie Gerson, clerk for the Treasure Chest Committee. I'm here tonight to follow through with the annual report that you received today, this week, and to introduce our acting chair, Deb Gibson.
So, I'm Debbie Gibson. I live on 21 Wendy's Way in Harwich, and just as an addition to the annual report, I had mentioned how many members we have, and we do have one other potential member currently applying to be on the board. What the items are that I thought I would just go over are what we completed in 2024, and these are basically updates, the volunteer rules of adequate, and the Treasure Chest operational plan guidelines has been put into effect as of 2024. Review, and everyone at the Treasure Chest has signed off on receiving the information. We did have the heating unit replaced in 2024. We initiated Treasure Chest badges, so we would be more visible to the customers, the Treasure Chest charge, and we also put up signage around the Treasure Chest building indicating where items are found, and we plan to continue that, so it's a little more organized. Our goals for 2025, myself with Ellie and one of the other board members, has created a document called the Treasure Chest Volunteers Best Practices, which I found when I started, it's been a little over two years, but there was nothing in actual writing about what you were supposed to be doing there as a volunteer. So, it's been put into writing, and at our January meeting, we're going to just make sure there's nothing else that needs to be added, and then it will go out to all the volunteers. We would like to raise awareness of the Treasure Chest stickers. We're hoping that in the summer, when the community center has the staff there that do the dump and the beach stickers, that maybe Treasure Chest stickers could be brought up, because we've heard that it's not always promoted. I know myself, I had to ask last year, you know, for, to get one. So, we would just like to have that be promoted, and then, once the community center has completed their selling session, where to get the stickers from then on, and that's basically because I never was quite sure where they were supposed to go. We're also hoping to improve our site organization, improve and utilize our website and Facebook presentation and how to access. I personally went on and tried to find our website, and I couldn't find it. So, we need to figure out where it is, and we, actually, the person that may be joining the board has more IT experience, so we're hoping that that person can help us develop our website. We're also looking to increase our knowledge of recycling practices. We are following the Massachusetts law for textiles, but questions do come up on how to best utilize that. We need more volunteers. We're basically, we're not a skeleton staff, but pretty close. We, I received today, the, I had asked to be included in the volunteer fair at the community center, so today I got the acknowledgement that we are, so we're going to go there to try to get some volunteers. And then, basically, just improve communication between the volunteers, board members, just across the board, between everyone. We do find that sometimes volunteers just don't come, and either they misunderstand, think they told somebody, or whatever, so we're going to try to improve that. So, that's our goals for 2025.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. About this, I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's not much of a question, it's an expression of gratitude. You have to have one of the most popular services that this town puts out there. So, I know my daughter comes from Florida for like six weeks in the summer, and if you could only keep her there for four of those weeks, that would be great. But she uses the service quite a bit. I was there, everybody seems happy, and they're working well together. This isn't towards you, it's just towards everybody who's maybe listening to this. The construct is a little bit convoluted in your committee compared to most others. The advisory committees normally just advise us straight out, and that's all there is. You develop policies by vote of your, majority vote of your board, to forward to us for us to approve, and on the pecking order, the volunteers are the ones who actually implement that policy. I just want everybody to be clear about that, because the people who sit on that committee actually do have some sort of overseeing responsibility for the volunteers. It all seems to be working really well now, given the history that we had over five or 10 years, so kudos to you guys. It's just a well-run operation.
Oh, thank you. I did forget to mention one item. We've had, I think, two instances in the last few years, but one in 2024, where there was inappropriate behavior of a customer. I went through all of our documents, and I couldn't find anything that told us how to relate to this, so we are going to add an addendum to the Treasure Chest operational plan, giving volunteers the authority to speak to customers that are exhibiting inappropriate behavior, whereas I think in the past, we've gone more to the Select Board to give us advice on that. So, we do have a pending conflict between one of the customers with another customer that, you know, we need to address. It's just sometimes hard to know who this person is, and of course, I think when something happens, the best time to do it is right then. And I don't think that people felt comfortable giving, telling somebody that they're appropriate, what appropriate behavior is. But this was, it definitely crossed the line, so even if the volunteer needs to go to the person in charge that day, or go to the chair, so that it can be addressed. My only issue with what happened last year is the point, the person was only pointed out to me once, and I don't think I can pick her out again. So, I have to follow up with that and, you know, figure out, because I do want to address it with her, that we don't accept, you know, behavior that is kind of discriminatory.
So, I would just ask that you would work with your liaison, though, for any kind of a --
Yes, the liaison is already, Jeff and I have already spoken.
Perfect.
Oh, we're on it, Madam Chair. We are on it.
You'll be stationed there personally.
Oh, I, absolutely. I've got my sticker. If I may, Madam Chair?
Sure.
As your liaison, I just want to thank you for what I thought was a really great year. My wife and I frequent, we drop things off. The system you have in place is working very well. And, you know, Deborah, yes, you and I had the conversation on the phone, Ellie introduced us, welcome aboard as the chair, I'm here to help any way you need, but I think that the way we're handling that issue that came from last year is exactly the way it needs to be handled right now. Put it in writing, put a policy together, let your volunteers know, but I do want to make one strong point. My first year as your liaison was a little bit more challenging in terms of volunteers feeling comfortable approaching somebody. If you just don't feel comfortable approaching somebody, to all the volunteers, call the police. If somebody's being belligerent, it is not the volunteers' responsibility to get in the middle of anything that they feel uncomfortable getting in the middle of. So, you know, our local police will certainly help, and then, if you need to run it up the flagpole to me, I'm happy to be of assistance anyway, again. So, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Jeff. Michael?
Just a great job, great report, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to provide you with my opinion on what you should do with that person, except it's not appropriate for this meeting, so I would agree with Select Manhale that if the situation warrants, call the police.
Yeah.
You folks don't need to be subjected to such, you know, behavior. But overall, sounds like you're doing a great job. I love the fact that you're digging into some of your policies and procedures, and trying to outline and clean things up to make it easier for the folks who are there to understand their responsibilities, and it only helps when you pass it on, you know, pass the torch. So, thank you.
So, I don't -- So I, I also recognize Link, Link Hooper.
Oh, yes.
Couldn't do it without Link. He, he is a huge help to this wonderful, wonderful treasure chest.
I just, for my follow-up, how, how many volunteers are you down?
Well, we have, on paper, we have 20, but we have two that go to Florida for the winter, which leaves us short. And when you look at the shifts, we have two shift leaders every shift, and then we have runners to put the stuff out. So it's the runners that were down, because some days, especially right now with illness, people are coming down with colds and not coming in, which may leave no runner or one, which is kind of stretching it. We were really busy this past Sunday, and we did have a sick call. So we could have used someone else. And if you look at the schedule of the volunteers, as long as nobody's sick and everybody shows up, then we're, we're really okay, but we don't have much flexibility with that.
Okay. And also, in terms of the website, Sarah Eaton, who's our IT Director, could also office on the system.
Oh, that would be great.
I, I'll make a call to Sarah tomorrow, and I'll be in touch.
I just wanted to say thank you, too, for all your hard work, and, you know, everybody loves the treasure chest, and I know it's not always you can own, so thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I'm just going to go on to the other items and take a couple of things out of order. First of all, Joe, I just want to give you the opportunity to, to address item C, new business, so that anybody in the audience who might be waiting, which I'm not sure there is, but, so no one's waiting.
Do you want me to do that now, or after?
Yeah, I would just do that now.
Let me get my notes for a moment. So the application that is pending for outside premises, I've spoken as a staff with Jeremiah, and we've agreed that the matter's not coming before us tonight, because we heard from council today, the, the board first needs to establish a process. So I will have something for you for your agenda next week to establish the process. In the meantime, we have a framework. It's very similar to the process we're doing. However, council advised today that it does require advertisement and public hearing, even though the new law is meant to expedite. So there's no action tonight on the application. The applicant agrees with that. Next week, you'll be asked under new business to adopt a process, and then that process will apply to any such applications.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, for the public, we're going to go ahead and go to our 2025 annual town meeting discussion item, which is number 10 on the, did you have something?
Madam Chair, if we could, if we could just get C, not CB, out of the way. It seems like a pretty light.
Oh, yeah.
We have two employees in the room that probably would like to go home.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you. I only saw two back there, so I'm sorry.
We're joined by Madison Grivens.
It's only for reading.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers. We're here tonight to discuss miscellaneous parcels. This is my third time over the last 15 years here addressing miscellaneous parcels, and currently, as it relates to Article 39 of the 2022 Annual Town Meeting. I'm joined tonight by our very capable assessing director, Carleen Jones. And I hope you all received and read the memo of December 10th of 2024. We currently have 132 miscellaneous parcels in town. 2006, we had 246 miscellaneous parcels. 2010 dropped to 224, 2021, 2001. We're now down to these. And I want to clarify, as we talk about Article 39, there are three types of properties we're talking about. Miscellaneous parcels, which we've asked for recommendations to you tonight. The second is owners unknown parcels. No idea who does own these parcels. Third is unidentified parcels in town. And if you have a chance sometime you hear in town hall going to your office, stop into the assessing department, please, and go into the conference room and have the assessing director show you the massive wall-sized map that we have of the town. And it will, you show you where some of these holes are in our community. And I'll be frank, we've been trying to deal with this for 15 years. My first memo was in 2010 to the then Board of Selectmen requesting that we eliminate miscellaneous parcels. The Department of Revenue does not allow for miscellaneous parcels to be established in a community. We've been carrying them for years. Then, assessing director David Scannell, in 2010, 2011, went through a process which we allowed people who were paying for miscellaneous parcels to continue paying. The big change tonight is we're asking to eliminate miscellaneous parcels. And as you saw in our recommendation from the board, that there are people who are paying for miscellaneous parcels. And our reaction, our recommendation is, if you want to pay for a miscellaneous parcel, great, just tell us where it is. And you need to tell us where it is by providing us a survey, so we could see where it is. And on the memo, I'm going to request two changes. One is that we made a recommendation that you drop these miscellaneous parcels by June 30th of this year. In discussing with our assessing director, who made the point very well so, that's difficult to get surveyors right now, so that we need to allow maybe more time to the end of the calendar year of 2025, to allow them to provide a survey to the town. And if they don't, we eliminate them. The past year, two years, the assessing director has been working diligently on this Article 39. In the first year, they dealt with the low-hanging fruit, and they identified a number of parcels that did provide some additional taxation to the community. The ones that she's dealing with, and she can speak to it herself, these are much more difficult properties. Eliminating the miscellaneous parcels, and hopefully, providing some of these owners who are paying taxes, and in many cases, by the way, these miscellaneous parcels are being billed for as low as $3.71 as a tax bill. That if we receive some of the surveys, it will help us identify some of these owners unknown parcels and some of these unidentified parcels, to really fulfill the goal of Article 39 that you as a board put forward. And the town voted half a million dollars towards this project, and we have not renewed our contract with the consultant to work on this. And fortunately, our assessing department, for the first time in many, many years, is at full staff. And a lot of the work that was done in the last year on this work was done by the assessing director, and I do want to acknowledge our assistant assessor in the back, who's worked diligently, diligently on this project. But of the 10 parcels that they researched heavily and came to some fruition with, three of those were owned by the town of Harwich. One of those was owned by the Harwich Conservation Trust. And the net effect was minimal to the town in terms of taxes received. We're here to answer questions about, and I've got a long narrative of what we're doing since 2010 on this. And in 2022, the then planning director had some suggestions of what we can do. But the bottom line is, we need to get rid of these miscellaneous parcels. The Department of Revenue does not allow them. We should get rid of them, and those who are paying, because there are people who have pocket deeds in this community. And we have parcels that we know who the owner is, but we don't know where the land is. You want to keep paying? Tell us where it is. If you can't tell us where it is, we need to eliminate it from the tax rolls. Carleen?
No, I think that pretty much covers it. I think that the big thing is with the Article 39 and the miscellaneous ones, is it throws a big wrench into the Article 39. Because when we find something, we have to compare that against 77 deeds, to see if it's already being assessed as miscellaneous. So in order to get more progress in the Article 39, I think this would be a great start.
Thank you. I'll open up to the board in terms of questions. Michael?
No, just ask what you need, other than verbal, for support from us tonight, to just make this happen.
I need to point out the difference from when we talked in 2010. And I think where it got bogged down in 2010, 2011, was that it incorporated too many people, too many chefs in the kitchen. It needed to be agreed upon by the finance director, administration, and the Board of Selectmen at that time. In this recommendation, I am asking that the assessing director with the finance director be the final arbiters of whether a property is dropped. And if you're comfortable with that, we don't want to have to come back to this board every time we want to drop 10 parcels. Once we have this policy in place, Carleen and the finance director can make a decision based on her knowledge and her research that she has done tremendous amount of work on to drop these parcels. And we may need, if I can, Mr. McGaskill, one other item. Out of that $500,000, there may be a time in dealing with some of these owners unknown and unidentified parcels, that we might need the services of a title abstractor, which we feel is better served than strictly an attorney. There are people at the registry, that's all they do all day long, is research, research, research. So if we could use that at some point with, under your direction or the town administrator's direction, that when Carleen needs it, she can hire that person to do that work.
If I may, the, the question now is based on the 132 miscellaneous properties that you're asking us to drop now. So getting outside of owners unknown and future projects, what do you need from us tonight to just make it so you can drop the 132 properties?
We need a vote of the board to allow the assessing director with the finance director to make that decision to drop those parcels.
On the 132 properties?
Correct.
And then, if you have it, the 132 active miscellaneous accounts, 77, 55 being owned by the town, what is the tax liability currently on the books for those 132 properties with penalty and interest?
The total?
Yeah.
1.02 million.
So that will take 1.02 million off of our tax liability and accruing that we're never going to get.
That would be a question for the tax office.
We don't deal with the tax collection, but your, your question is correct, that that liability will go. How they get rid of it, I would defer to your town administrator, your finance director and tax collector.
But it will also prevent it from getting bigger.
Yeah. I would move that we support the ask as presented.
Any other board members have comments, or Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not going to vote for this, because I'd love to see what those parcels are before I carte blanche convey the authority to do what you need to, or you feel you need to do with them, number one. Number two, it's, unless I'm, well, I do know of one thing from my own past, is this has been a pervasive problem, and under state law, we were accepting payments for things that were, we couldn't put them on the ground, but the, somebody had a, a document stating that they owned them, and, and they were nonetheless, I can think of one in particular, that we had to perfect the title for, for the homeowner and convey it back to them after eminent domain, because someone was trying to make a raid on their property. So it, it exists, but the state had always taken the position that anybody could pay the taxes for any property, but it didn't convey ownership, and it didn't convey evidence of ownership. I'm wondering how that changed through the years. And more specifically, there are circumstances, which you folks know, that involve planning, where there's contingent PNS that's sitting out there that may very well be piecing together properties that currently don't make any sense to you, but if the, the contingency is satisfied, they wind up filing a new deed that, that specifies where those boundaries are. And I kind of feel like, to a certain degree, without knowing what properties we're talking about, that we may be including some of that, which is going to come up later in this meeting.
If I may, we'd love to know what they are, too. And that's the whole idea. We don't know where any of these parcels are. And the point of allowing a year, if someone's going to purchase and sell a property right now, great, they're going to file a new deed and a new plan. Bring in a plan, show us where it is. If it corresponds to the deed, it goes on the tax rolls. It solves that problem, Mr. Howell. And I don't care what people, reason people have for sitting on deeds, that's entirely up to them. But we're spending tremendous amount of time, and that for each deed that comes in, the staff has to compare it against 77 other deeds, to see it's one of these miscellaneous parcels. The amount of work that they're doing, so what we're saying is, great, if you have one of those deeds, perfect, give us a plan. And if you're in process of doing a development now, great, do the plan, submit the plan with the deed, we'll put it on, we'll be happy to bill you. And the thing is, the bills that are going out now are for minimal amount. I'd love for someone to come in and say, hey, I got five lots. Great, we're going to assess you with $300,000 per lot, that tax rate will go up dramatically with those.
At least some of what I'm talking about does not have frontage independent of joining with other properties that would give it frontage. So they, that isn't going to be something that you would be a primary source for. But more, more to the point, if you're going to drop anything, that means you know who it is or where it is you're going to drop it. All I'm asking for is an indication of vaguely what properties you're talking about.
We, we do have a list of, of people who are paying. We'd be happy to provide you a list, but we don't know where they are.
But love to see it.
Yep, I can email the list.
She can email you this week, if that's, okay?
No objection.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
I'm sorry, Don, we...
No, that was it.
Now, my concern is with the, with the June 30th date, so I'm happy to hear you extended or recommending extending it. I thought that was a little too quick as well, so, thank you.
Overzealous, Mr. Pikarski.
Okay. Determined.
Passionate.
Well, I, I would just say that I'd be inclined to support the ask by the people who've done all the work and the research, and, and taken the time to parse through all of this. As you mentioned, Mr. Waystack, it's been 15 years that, that this ask has been on the table. And I, I agree with Mr. Pikarski that June 30th was too quick. You remedied that. And I sit here, and I truly believe that you've embedded provisions in place so that nobody's going to get injured with their property, lose their property, and they may end up bringing it back on the tax roll. So I, I applaud you for your work. You typically always think things out right to the very end, so that's great. I'd support this.
Well, we're fortunate to have very qualified staff.
It's clear.
And, and they've done tremendous work in, in bringing it to this point.
Yeah, it's clear.
Any kind of deed research is excruciating, and having to then go back and compare everything. So I appreciate all the, the effort and the work in here. And again, it's been an ask for quite some time, so I'd be inclined to support it as well. So.
Just to be clear, I am not disparaging your work, and I am not saying that I don't fundamentally agree with the outcome, except that I don't know what we're throwing into the hopper to get an outcome. That's the reason I asked for that information.
We'll be happy to provide the information to you.
And actually, just as a follow-up, one other thing, you know, engineers are so difficult, and trying to get a plan and all that and the backlog. So I guess a reasonable ask would be, if somebody comes to you, let's just say October, November, and, you know, in writing, is willing to show you that they're working with an engineer, but their plan isn't going to be ready till the beginning of the year, I, I think that, you know, that shows some sort of faith in what they're trying to work on.
Absolutely.
The delays are huge, so.
And that's why having a check and balance with the director of assessing and the finance director, we can accommodate that, and they can also make an appeal to the board. And so we're most happy to do that. I just, before you vote, I want to utilize the time as a commercial, because all of you've received your tax bills in the last week.
Thank you.
That anyone who wishes to challenge the value of their property, you have 30 days to file an abatement with the Board of Assessors to review the value of your property. So if anyone questions their value, now is the time to get that in. We are time certain, and after February 1st, we will no longer accept any abatement applications.
Thank you. Don?
You opened up Pandora's Box, so I'm going to comment on it, too. There is another route to get to them questioning the amount that they're paying, and everybody needs to understand that I've been like a broken record on this for the last year, year and a half. When we go to town meeting and we approve a project, it doesn't show up on your tax bill the very next day. Matter of fact, it doesn't necessarily even show up the very next year, until you actually perform the borrowing to associate with it. So the public needs to know that that's another avenue for why their taxes have gone up for previously approved projects that have not been borrowed for and to be commenced. So as they go to this town meeting, they may want to consider that that's, there's a jet lag between when we ask for an action and when it's actually going to hit somebody's tax bill.
I do thank you for that, because I know staff gets questioned that all the time. The assessing department... The Assessing Department does not set taxes. The Assessing Department establishes value. Town meeting and the actions of the taxpayers determine how much you will be paying in taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just for the record, as you consider this matter, the Assessing Director and I met with the Finance Director, the interim Finance Director, last month. As you know, Ed has extensive experience in municipal finance. He was a little bit baffled by the Harwich way that you've all inherited and all that, but I know that Ed also supports everything that is articulated here tonight, including supporting the Assessing Director as she goes through that process of determining what gets dropped and what remains.
Thank you, Joe. Can I get a motion?
He did. We have a motion.
Does it include the 12/31 deadline? I didn't hear that, so.
What's the date change?
12/31.
12/31/25.
Yep.
Is that for both elements? Items one and two in the memo?
Yes, and that, oh, no, I'm sorry, for the unpaid, they can be dropped immediately. For those who are paying, they have until 12/31/25 to provide a plan. And the other change in it is that the final arbiter will not strictly be the Assessing Director, but the Assessing Director and the Finance Director.
That was my motion.
Perfect.
Thank you. It's a long motion.
Can you second it?
Nope. I'm not going to vote for it.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
No.
Oh, sorry.
I said upfront, I'm not voting for it.
You said no, so four, and a no, one.
Madam Chair, could I ask that the board be notified when they get dropped off and what those numbers are through the Finance Division?
Madam Chair, I would like to, and my Assessing Director may not agree with me, but pledge to come back quarterly to tell you how it's going with these changes, if that would be sufficient, because your board were the ones behind Article 39. And so we're happy to report back to you to say, how is it going? I'm sure you'll get phone calls, and those who are paying right now, five dollars, ten dollars on a miscellaneous parcel who don't want to lose it, they're going to complain that they have to get a plan. I'm sure you'll hear that. But it's in the best interest of this community, the best interest of dealing with some of those past tax liabilities, that we do this.
And just for your knowledge, you and I discussed this, Carleen, you and I discussed it. I'll be back to the board with an ask for procurement for a title abstractor and a surveyor sooner rather than later.
Thank you all.
And you'll just share that list?
Yes.
Perfect. Great.
The entire board want the list?
Yeah, we can all have it. Thank you. And thanks for your time. Okay, so now we will go on. I don't think we're holding anyone else up with the other items left on our list, except for I know item A under Old Business, but I think if we can just go to the 2025 Annual Town Meeting item for the discussion on Montomoy Regional School District siding feasibility study.
If this gentleman is in the audience waiting?
Is he here? Is anyone here for the, for item D under New Business?
Robert Henemeth, in the building? Okay, then I guess we can. I see more than.
No, I know, that's.
Yes.
Yes, actually, I'm here remotely.
Okay. All right, then, we'll take care of your item now.
Madam Chair, if I may, I move that we approve a special permit application for a road race for Robert Henemeth, five K for the children, race to be held on September 27, 2025, 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, now, go to item 10, and Michael, if you want to join. Good evening.
Good evening.
And for the public, anyone who's looking to make any comments, I will let Michael and Scott do their presentation, and then the public can come up to the microphone, or if you're online, motion that you have any comments so that Jamie can allow you.
So what we have for you is a presentation of our capital plan. The end of that is sort of like the biggest ticket item, which is the reciding project that's at the middle school. We presented the same presentation to the Chatham Select, we're just before the holidays, and glad to be here before you now, after the holidays. So I'll turn this over to Michael.
Good evening, slideboard. Mr. Powers, thank you very much for having us. I like your new tables. They're very imposing. So just as a superintendent, like, this is kind of our entire capital plan, it's a couple items. Obviously, the big ticket item is the siding at the middle school, but with a couple of other things just to take you through with this project. Oh, yeah, look at that. Perfect. So we have, we actually presented to you not that long ago on our capital plan, so I won't go into too much detail, but you know the process we go through. And the first step is kind of needs assessment, where we look at our buildings, we prioritize the projects, and then look for funding, and that's kind of the approach we were at at the moment, to find how we will fund our projects. So we did our facilities project, I mean, despite what we're going to discuss, the buildings are in relatively good condition. We have, and however, some of our major components, like boilers, generators, and so on, are nearing the end of their useful life. I mean, obviously, the high school is still is in mint condition. We do have spent a lot of money on our preventative maintenance. And the middle school and Chatham Elementary School have the most immediate needs. And as you know, and actually, this has been an ongoing issue, is air quality challenges at the middle school, which have gone worse. So as I mentioned, and you've seen this slide before, so I apologize for boring you, but it's just, you know, I just want to highlight that a number of the major components of our building are nearing the end of their useful life, and I apologize for all the red boxes, but, you know, I've highlighted that under the new regional agreement, Chatham Elementary School is the responsibility of Chatham, in terms of funding, and Harwich Elementary School is the responsibility of the town of Harwich when it comes to the regional assessment. And then I also just highlighted some of the areas, kind of of most concerned, boilers, which are getting near the end of their useful life, and generators. I will say, though, that in all four of our buildings, our facilities team have done a great job of maintaining these, and we're getting professionals in to maintain our particular boilers, so they're actually in great working condition at the moment. So, you know, no concerns about the functioning, but, you know, as things get older, it costs more to maintain them and more to repair them, and there's a higher risk of failure. We have completed, or we've been working on a number of projects. We, over the summer, did a replacing flooring at the middle school and Chatham Elementary School. We upgraded the high school's camera system, that was an unplanned project when one of the servers died on us, and we had to do that, scramble to do that quickly, but we got it done. We replaced classroom displays at the middle school. We used some federal grant funds to upgrade the Chatham Elementary School courtyard, and high school phone system was upgraded and brought in, so we now have one system for the whole district. And we replaced, it was a while ago now, it seems, we replaced communal furniture at the high school over the summer. We are still working on the press box, so that is something that came before you. We're working on the design for the press box and looking to get into contract with that hopefully in the next month. And the middle school siding project. We did complete a Harwich Elementary School rooftop unit installation a couple of months ago, that was part of our budget, a couple of months ago, that was part of our FY25 budget, and now the middle school roof is also part of our plans. So my next slide, and I apologize, this is another kind of busy slide, but I kind of, oh, sure. So, did I? Sorry. So what that slide shows is just a number of projects we have coming up over the next five, six, and beyond years. And I also highlights, oh, perfect, thank you. Perfect, thank you. So, you know, so, and this is a challenge when you put together, when I put, a challenge for me when I put together this plan, is that, you know, even though some things aren't immediately, like, so for example, the boilers, which are getting on for 30 years old, like, they're still working fine, I just get anxious that the more we push them off, the older, you know, because we've got so many things to do, so if we're looking at replacing some of those in FY31, they're at 35 years old by then. So we put some, one thing off, that bumps everything down the line. So, but this is, I mean, this is an ambitious plan, so, you know, I'd hope to be able to get all these things done, but it's definitely will be challenging in terms of financing and also just my workload. But, and so the ones in, the projects in red are ones that may require borrowing, and the ones with the blue are the ones where we're sure we just assess to one town 100%. If anyone has any questions at any point, feel free to.
Sure. Does any board member currently have any questions? Joe?
Not a board member, but I do have a question. So, Michael, we have the draft's capital hourly plan for the town of Harwich, and presently the plan shows that there were no projects in fiscal year '26. Now I see you have the $40,000 for the alarms.
Yes.
We show for fiscal year '27, $65,000. Does that still correspond to the program, to the project listed on that sheet?
Well, so let's, so can, if I can go on, so the middle school roofing project has kind of thrown a wrench in that plan, because that was a new project that's been added since we were accepted into the MSBA's accelerated repair program. So if I could do that first, and then we'll come back to that.
Sure, I just want to make sure that our plan reflects.
So this is, I mean, so every year, we review our plan and update it, depending on information we have, and that, you know, things change within our buildings. And so I suspect the information you have is from last year, and this is a kind of updated version.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this, the current FY26 draft budget, because I'm trying to think of that, $67,000, it was replacing another rooftop unit, and I think we prioritized doing these smoke alarms ahead of that, that's why that's.
Just to inform you, what we show presently is $65,000, this is all Harwich Elementary, $65,000 in fiscal year '27, $54,000 in fiscal year '28, and $1,115,000 in fiscal year '29.
Yeah. Thank you. So the, this is the items we currently have in FY26 draft budget, which will be presented to you before you know it. We have continuing to do carpet flooring replacement at Chatham Elementary School and the middle school. And what I mean by that, we have carpet, or it's all carpet, actually, which we're replacing with, in most cases, tile, which is a bit more, helps to, you know, reduce maintenance costs, and it improves air quality. There is, in some cases, we have asbestos encased underneath those, and the mastic and the glue on those tiles, so it's all encased, so it's not a problem. But when we want to replace the carpets, it's a, that's why it's so expensive, we have to have abatement in there, we have to, the company come in, take out that all under special certain conditions, and then we can put the new carpets and the new flooring in. We have ongoing work to replace, it's a service and repair exhaust fans at the middle school, so, I mean, for the last few years, we've had a lot of work going on with our HVAC equipment at the high school, and we've kind of increasingly turned our minds to the work that needs to get done at the middle school to ensure that we maintain air quality, we have the circulation of air as is required for a building like that. We have, we would like to replace a high school, we have a facilities vehicle that, we actually have two vehicles, one at the highs, one at Harwich Elementary School, and one at the high school, and we'd like to replace them with one vehicle. They're both nearing the end of their useful life, and it's becoming more expensive to keep them on the road. Every year, we contribute to our capital stabilization fund, which would allow us to draw on that fund should there be an emergency mid-year that was not planned, and replacing smoking alarm, smoke alarms at the Harwich Elementary School. So this is just capital I'm going to come on to debt at the moment. So the Chatham Elementary School flooring, which we don't care so much about, because that will go all to the Chatham Elementary School, although there will also be some of those costs at the, at the middle school. So that's kind of flooring we're putting in. And then the replacement of smoke alarms, so that shouldn't be a difficult job, because all the wiring and everything's already in place, it's just taking one out and putting a new one in, so it's not complicated, but there's a lot of them, so it's expensive. So the next project I wanted to talk a bit about, the middle school siding projects, which you should have received some more documentation about this, but I want to just give you an overview of where we've got to and where the costs are. So we did have, so since we last booked, we've appointed an architect who has started to develop the, well, has prepared a feasibility study, really kind of starting to design documents, looking at the current conditions of the building, and starting to design for replacing the siding. So when they looked at the current conditions, and these are slides I borrowed from them, there were loose shingles, missing shingles, rotted trim, also mildew, which means that there's water in the tiles, missing cap trim, more peel and paint, and water, evidence of water infiltration, buckled shingles and so on. You know, we're seeing some interior damage. So the architects and their subcontractors took a lot of test cuts, so that's really to help them understand the full scope of the project, because as we understand, and you know, discussions we've had, it's not, unfortunately, it's not just about taking off some shingles and putting them back, it's also about taking off the shingles, reviewing what's underneath the shingles, replacing the sheathing, and also insulation, and anything else that's been water damaged. We also know that, and that's what these, the purpose of these test cuts, so they had a good idea exactly what's, or what, as far as they can tell, what is going to be underneath the shingles when they start to take them off. So one of the things that we discovered in that process was that around the windows, there was not sufficient flashing around the windows, so that means that there's not a sufficient barrier to prevent water getting into the building once it got behind the windows, the windows. The windows themselves, though, are, I mean, they're also old, but they're in good condition, they're still functioning, you know, they haven't failed, they're still in good condition. And as I mentioned, some damaged insulation, some rotting infiltration, we have dealt with that, and you can see some of the damage of that water and rusting.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Michael. Quick question for you, if you don't mind. The date at the windows without the flashing, the year that was, they were installed?
They were installed.
Is that '97?
It would be around then, I can't, yeah, 90s.
That was renovation.
Yeah, that's when we did, yeah, the renovation was.
All right, I didn't hear.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's an accurate date.
The rebuild?
So there was a, there was a renovation of the middle school where they sort of redid the entire outside and then built an extension that currently is the sort of fifth grade wing of the building, and that was '97.
So way before regionalization.
Correct.
Second question, if I could, on that topic, is, was there an asset inspection done prior to the regional agreement being executed? Meaning, did anyone go and inspect the other towns' buildings since we were going to be the ones kind of absorbing a 75%? I don't know if you have that answer, or if somebody in town of Harwich has that answer, but.
I don't know. It predates me, I can, we can go look at the records, but.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
So just, so carrying on, so, I mean, one of the things to know, I mean, once water starts to get into the building, the impact is fast, so a lot of this damage will have happened in the last 10 years, although, you know, some of the conditions are already in place. So some, just continuing, some of the damage that's been caused by the rotting siding and trim. And then the recommended project, so this is the project outlined by architects is to demolish all the existing siding and trim down to the plywood sheathing, replace any rotted sheathing, replace any rotted insulation, install new finished siding, new composite trim to match the siding, properly flash the windows and doors. Existing windows, as I mentioned, windows and doors are to remain in place, but we will repair and replace downspouts, light fixtures, and miscellaneous items where necessary, so this does not plan to replace all the downspouts, because if they're fine, they won't replace them, but where there's damage, they won't replace them, and likewise with the edging, edges, gutters, and foundations. So part of the work of this project so far has been to do an cost estimate. So the construction cost estimate, which is in the feasibility study prepared by the architect, was just 4.8 million. just four point eight million. And with additional thirty percent in soft costs, that would take the total cost to six point three million. That includes design contingency and, uh, you know, other contingency based on what they find behind the sides, siding when they start to take it off. So, I mean, so obviously, that's a lot more than two point five million dollars we originally requested. Uh, I think there's a number, a number of reasons for that. I think the condition of the building is worse than we expected. Uh, I think construction costs are much higher, you know, just keep going up every year. And, you know, the soft costs are much more substantial than we estimated. So, all the, you know, the cost of the designers and the project planners, and eh, and also the challenge, because this project won't be completed over the summer, so the additional costs of having stage equipment during the school year and so on is also factored into that estimate.
Just for clarification, I just happened to be looking through, and it's nineteen ninety-six.
Oh, thank you.
That it was the renovation.
Yeah.
It says the renovation included substantial alterations to the original building, including complete reconstruction of the exterior walls, window and door replacements, and a large two-story addition. So just for the record.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, just riffing off of what Jeff was asking originally, uh, I'm aware, I was here when that, uh, alteration was made, I was more like a rebuild than a, a simple alteration. So there's a couple of things. Do you have any idea whether there's, uh, I know it preceded you guys and preceded this board here, but, uh, it, at that time, it was the obligation of the town of Chatham, uh, to renovate the building. Is, anybody have an idea of how long that was bonded for, and, I mean, that would give me an indication of how long they thought it was going to last?
So, so when we first came together as a regional school district, I believe our very first fiscal year that I was here, we were paying off the last of the debt on that project. So.
Essentially, the twenty years?
Yeah. So, so that had, that had dropped off, that, you know, I know, I can remember back in budget presentations, there was some, you know, some small debt that was dropping off the books at the end of that year while the high school was going.
And before we get further off the beaten path here, because I consider these interrelated subjects, are you considering, when you're doing the carpeting, it's some poor flooring, of doing a like exchange? Because, I mean, we do live in a high humidity area, and my concern is, I used a contract for this with the federal government, my concern is the carpet in general is a dust magnet, a mic magnet, a mold magnet, especially on concrete, even whether it's treated or not.
So in veer, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, so we have been shifting away from carpet, you know, when, when we first came together as a, as a regional school district, the, the entire middle school was carpeted, I think, except for science labs and maybe a s, a small area around sinks and, in some classrooms. And we've been, you know, we've been slowly but surely going through, you know, going through the building, replacing, because I definitely agree with you, trying to, trying to get it from carpet to something that, that both lasts longer, is easier to clean, but also, you know, I, I think it, it just improves indoor air quality when you don't have the carpeting situation.
And, and the reason I ask that is, at some point, not this second, but after your presentation, I'm going to ask, uh, if you've done any extensive, and I'm, by extensive, I mean in every room, air quality testing, so that you can ascertain, you know, what the exact depth of your problem is, because there's a physical appearance problem, but there's also the order of consequences problem, that it affects the air with spores and things. So, and I can't tell that, and you can't tell that unless you've had it actually done. So, but that's before you leave conversation.
Absolutely. Uh, so the other, so that was the siding project. So the other project at the middle school also is replacement of the roof. So we appl, applied to the Massachusetts School Building Authority Accelerated Repair Program, which is a state-run program, uh, to replace roofs and boilers and windows at buildings that are accepted onto their program. So we were accepted on, and they, they helped fund the high school when it was built as well. And so the reimbursement rate for this project would be thirty-seven point three-two percent. So that means, you know, for every ten dollars we spend, we get almost four back.
And again, this, this is for the roof. There, there isn't a similar thing at the state MSBA for a siding project.
But, this isn't specific to you, but I've been kind of musing over this. It's like they're literally, over the last two years, been shoveling money out the door, trying to get people involved with high-efficiency heat pumps, and is there any program that they've got going on that doesn't have you footing the bill, which means us, uh, for replacing the boilers, boilers in a more traditional way?
Uh, so, the MSBA's boiler replacement project has been on hold this year while they investigate that very issue, like what they should be doing going forward. So, in the past, they would have replaced, and I did a project in a previous district replacing an old boiler with this similar, you know,
Yeah.
modern version, but just the same, you know, oh, eh, style of boiler. But they are now looking towards, going towards heat pumps and something.
I was asking that because as a matter of policy, everybody else in the world is being told, we'll give it to you.
Yeah, yeah. So we would be funded, it would be a similar thing where we'd get a similar reimbursement rate, unless they come up with a whole new program for it. So we wait that, yeah, because that would be great for our, so our boiler replacements, depending on how much they're going to give us. And so, uh, there's two part, well, here, this, this is kind of, this is not very easy to read here, but this is, uh, uh, the MSBA's process for completing an accelerated repair program, eh, project. So you have the, uh, preparation, which is where we are at, where we're just kind of at right now, which is getting school committee approval and so on. We have included in our budget the funds for the feasibility studies, so there's no additional debt or capital required for the first step of this project. Eh, then we will be, so we will get, they actually assign you a project manager and designer, you know, so like, you get a, eh, assigned by the MSBA to get them, and starting the process of designing the solution for the roof, and we'll do the cost estimate and so on. And then, at that point, as we get into FY twenty-five and twenty-six, we'll be developing the feasibility study, the design, and we'll start the procurement in order to get a good idea of the actual cost. And then, because that will require debt, that's another project where we'd have to get school, eh, school committee, and then ultimately town meeting approval to take on the additional debt to fund the project. And we envisage doing that. So, everything going according to plan, we're able to do the siding starting in this summer, and into the fall, and we do the roof the following summer. You know, that's, uh, that's the most aggressive plan, I think. So the impact, the direct impact on the budget, so, although, although the way we did it for the siding originally was, you have two, you know, there's two articles as a budget, which includes the capital cost and the, and the debt cost, and then there's an article just to approve the debt, doesn't actually increase the budget. Uh, but because, so because the current draft of the budget actually included some costs for the siding project. So we had included an initial payment, uh, of two hundred fifty thousand dollars, which was, uh, to be used for initial payment. We actually think that, that our estimate of payments on FY twenty-six will just be three hundred thousand dollars. So that's actually an increase of just fifty thousand dollars. Our plan is to do short-term borrowing for FY twenty-six until we get into FY twenty-seven, which we would be able to roll it in with the high school, outside the middle school roof, and put them all out to debt, to borrow the debt together, which would get us a better rate. So alongside that, we just got through the process of refinancing the high school construction loan. So the annual payment for that in FY twenty-six is actually lower than it was in FY twenty-five now, because we've got a better rate. So I, so, good news, in the financial perspective, is our actual debt need actually goes down in FY twenty-six, because we already have some of the funding for the roof, for the siding, and the cost for the high school roof, which is ongoing, has come down a little. So, impacting the bottom line for this, this phase of the project is not an increase in our budget. And that is an overview of our capital plan. And then.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Joe?
Um, if I could go back, um, to an earlier comment and questions on the six years that you've identified, uh, under major projects, under slide deck number six, and the concept of the boilers at the elementary school. So again, and we can get particulars for the plan
Yeah.
for, um, capital for the articles, but, um, at present, the town of Harwich shows one million, one hundred fifteen thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-nine, which I believe was projected to be the boiler work.
Yeah.
So, on that slide there, thank you, Jamie. On that slide there, you can see that that pushes out the boilers for Harwich Elementary School
Definitely.
to either fiscal year thirty-one or beyond, let's go with thirty-one. Well, based on your slide number four, two of our three boilers will be forty years old.
Yeah.
When you talk about a useful life of twenty. Aren't we rolling the dice on the boilers for the elementary school if we do that?
I mean, so the challenge is which thing, so yeah, I mean, yes. I mean, every year, you go beyond the useful life of this equipment. So what we, what are.
Yeah, but we, and I apologize, but I mean to drive like that. But we're talking twice the useful life of two of the three boilers. The other boiler will only be a spry twenty-eight.
A, so the, the cha, the challenge is that they're in great working order. So we do get them serviced twice a year, and the vendor who services them tells us they're in great working order, they do not need to be immediately replaced.
We're going to pretend these are wood.
So, yeah, I mean, uh, you know, I have worked in districts where the boilers are failing a lot, and they were, they failed a lot. Like, so they would break, you'd be like rushing to get them up again. We don't have those problems. So, but we do have to make, you know, so we have to make an assessment of what our priorities are, and we, but I don't know what thing I would push off to do those.
And I appreciate that. And my only other comment, if I could, Madam Chair, through you, is, so we see up here, what I counted, we're twenty-three projects. Uh, twelve of them are, um, district-related, six and a half are Chatham Elementary, and four and a half are Harwich Elementary. And the biggest one there for Harwich Elementary, in my opinion, are those antiquated boilers.
Yeah.
So there's, there's a little bit of, my, my observation only.
Yeah.
There's some disparity, um, in how the projects are laying out. Now, I fully understand that age of building is going to play a big part of that, but I think as you board members get into this discussion, as we board and administration and the town get into our town meeting, and certainly get into the big discussion tonight on the middle school, those are big numbers and big projects that are looming for us.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to put that narrative out there as well.
So, yeah, and I think that's, you know, so I think that's a great point, and I really appreciate that. So then, of, of the projects before that, though, that, the boilers, of the debt, I mean, I guess I did, you know, it's a good point, and I take it on, I guess I did space out the, the projects that required debt, I kind of timed those separately from the capital lines. But there would be nothing, you know, if we real, you know, discussions, if we decided to move forward one of the Harwich boilers, if that was something the town is interested in. There's no reason why we couldn't do it sooner.
If I could, Michael, just right now, the, the current plan that was presented to town meeting, currently, shows it in twenty-nine.
Yeah.
The draft plan that we have shows it in twenty-nine. Um, it's not an objection to move it out, it's just an observation that, um, our Harwich Elementary, uh, capital costs over the next five years are going to drop significantly.
Yeah.
So that looks good for the plan.
Yeah.
But is it good for the building, and is it good for the town?
And so of the other projects which are coming before that, that require debt, they're all district projects, except for the CES roof and siding. So it's not that we're prioritizing one town over the other, it's just that the needs, so one of the, so for example, with the boilers, although the middle school boilers are, eh, are not as old, they're not as in good condition as the Harwich ones, and that's why we're replacing them sooner. So it's a kind of, it's a needs assessment that's direct determining those priorities.
Uh, did you have a comment?
Yeah, actually, riffing off of what Joe was saying, uh, they're just a part of the overall ecosystem, which, which is
Yeah.
the heating system. Uh, and I know you guys weren't here, but that was a precipitating factor to even talk about rebuilding the elementary school. Uh, they had sick rooms. The registers weren't working properly.
Yeah.
And I gather that part of their plan was, although I'm looking at what was done in the middle school, which was the high school in Chatham, and it doesn't look like everything that everybody would have expected occurred there either. Uh, but I would caution you that it's not just the boilers that are old, it's kind of like having a car where you have
Yeah.
you refurbish the engine, but the rest of it's twenty-eight years old. The, the rest of the car's going to fail. So I, I would think that you would want to be able to look at every, every part of that to make sure that the entire system is functioning as it would, because Joe's right. I mean, these things have a useful life, and if we're really lucky and are good people, they sometimes last longer.
Yeah.
But, uh, I wouldn't want to confuse luck for skill.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other comments from board members?
I'll jump in, if you don't mind. Um, couple thoughts, couple questions, and I'm going to jump all over the place, because that's how my brain works. Um, said a different way, it doesn't. But, um, the status of the two and a half million from, from this fiscal year, last year's approval.
Yeah.
What's the status of that money?
So, so what that approval was, was for us to go out and borrow two and a half million dollars. So we have not done that.
You have not, okay. So at this point, um, any work that you've done has come out of your regular operating budget?
Yeah.
And so, the, the request for the six, six, eight, whatever the number is.
Yeah.
Um, would, would not include that two and a half from previous approval?
No, yeah, it's totally, so I guess
Gotcha.
the two and a half would just go away and we'd have a six point, well, it depends, I say, I'm not sure how you would do the article, but essentially, the net would be six point.
Gotcha, right. So whether we just add, you know, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, or.
Whatever, gotcha. Okay. Um, the, um, what'd you say, there's a thirty percent lift that you had built in?
For soft costs, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Looking at the, the, and I don't have, again, it's probably me, but I'm only getting a few pages of the, um, the presentation, and I had it all earlier, so I'm sure I, I screwed it up. But, look, looking at some of the totals, it looked like there was some soft costs already built into the four-eight number.
Yeah, some contingency costs.
Yeah. So you still think an additional thirty on top of that's required?
Yes. Um, so
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, so that, I mean, the, I, I mean, the hope is that it doesn't cost six point three. So we get, we get approval to, to borrow up to six point three, but, you know, as with the high school, so we had approval to borrow a certain amount of the high school, we didn't end up borrowing that much. And eventually, we had a vote to release that approval, because it didn't actually, you know. So, you know, my, I mean,
Your hope is it's going to be less.
My hope is it'd be less, but I definitely don't want to be here a third time saying, oh, it's now, you know, it's not four million, it's six million, I need an extra. So, you know, and then, and it does conclude, you know, like, say, if things, if all goes well, and, you know, the construction increases that they have forecast or not realized, or if we're able to do it more quickly than we'd hoped, or we get, you know, good competition in our bids, which is what we'll really
Yeah.
be aiming for, then maybe, hopefully, the cost will be less.
Okay. So, so when we were here, you know, roughly, you know, roughly a year ago, our estimate was that we had gotten from a contractor was that it would take about two million dollars to, to side the building. And, and then clearly, when we brought in the architect, and the architect brought in their engineers, and they start punching, you know, doing the hole cuts, you know, so just to emphasize, the pictures that you see are their hole cuts, it's when they remove away, and, and, you know, if a boiler, if the boarding behind it seems punky, you know, they're punching, you know, they're punching through. It's not like they came and there were big holes in the, you know, the side of the building. But, but, you know, their estimates is like, okay, how much, you know, how much board, you know, like wallboard do they need to go and replace, you know, based on the, their hole cuts that they're putting in? How much insulation batting behind that? And I, I think there's, you know, there's somewhat of a misconception when we talk siding project, that we're going to take a building and just replace the side, and, you know, materials on the inside that might have been compromised doesn't get addressed, you know. So those additional costs in that, you know, in that, you know, the later estimate are based on what would it cost to go and replace and, and get everything refreshed that's underneath that's been compromised.
Okay, so if I can run, run with that theory for a second, because that's obviously a concern. So, so your interpretation is with the money's available, if you find damaged wallboard inside, or damaged ceiling tiles inside that currently have mold or mildew associated with them, you're going to address those during this project?
So the ceiling tiles, we're doing all the time. So if we ever have, you know, leaks or anything like that, that damp, you know, or HVAC-related leaks that we replace, we fix them and replace ceiling tiles. So this will, yes, but the short answer is yes. If when we pull off the siding, there's work that's exposed, it's damaged, we'll replace If when we pull off the siding, there's work that's exposed, it's damaged, we'll replace that and we'll not cover it up. But like, if there's other additional stuff in the building, like a windowsill, that, you know, we will, we are actively doing that right now within our current operating budget.
Right, and, and I just want to clarify, so we're not talking about sheathing, we're talking about wallboard inside the building? If you come across that when they're doing their project? Or are you going to explore in some of these areas of, of high concern if there is damage to the wallboard?
So I, I don't, I don't know that they saw any damage to the, to the drywall on the inside from what they were punching through. There was definitely the, when I was talking, when I said wallboard, I was referring to the.
Sheathing.
The, you know, the, the sheeting underneath, underneath the, maybe you've got the, the shingles, you've got that, ideally the waterproof Tyvek type membrane that's on, and then the, the, you know, the sheeting, that's, that's what I was calling.
Understood, thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
Now, I'm looking at some of the pictures and I see some of the trim work that has been rotted from, from water damage.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not an expert, you know, I don't, I don't work in the trades. However, I, I have to imagine that that water has infiltrated into the wallboard near, near that section of, of trim and, and therefore is going to have some type of moisture problem. Is that something that has been actively pursued yet or might be pursued in the future?
So, so I, I can, all, all I can do is address, you know, so there are spaces that we've gone into where we've had a compromised windowsill and popped the windowsill. And, you know, when we've removed the windowsill, we can see the drywall that's there and we've removed cabinetry from up against walls under the, under the windows. We haven't seen any visible signs of mold in the drywall that's on the inside layer. We're just, you know, it's, it seems to be at the moment, you know, under that, you know, under that sill area and then what's under those, what's under those walls. And as, as Michael emphasized in, in the, I think the biggest sort of aha that we got from the engineers going in is this sort of lack of flashing like we would flash a building in today's standards, that you've got a whole building that has areas around windows that just were inadequately flashed. And if you go through the building, there are signs depending on where wind blown rain hit the building during which storm, that, you know, I'd say that many windows have signs that there was some water that came in at them at some point. I can, I can speak, both Michael's office and my office are in the middle school.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's a window in my office that there's a sign that there was water that came in during some, some rain event. But it's, there hasn't been water that's come in in 12 years since I've been in that office. You know, so, you know, so 12 years ago, there was, there was evidence that something came in during some storm or storms, you know, so that you see sort of like the, the drywall and you have, when it, when the drywall got wet, right, you know, right along the edge of the windowsill. So you see that in a number of spaces throughout the building. But when we've popped these windowsills, we haven't seen, and, and we've replaced a number of windowsills when, you know, when we're going into a room that somebody said, okay, there's a smell. Like, we're going and trying to go and problem solve where that water intrusion's coming from and trying to stop it while we wait for the big project to go hopefully, you know, seal the walls and seal the roof to go and have the building, have the whole envelope secured.
Right, which I agree is important. However, if, if there's moisture trapped inside, then that becomes problematic down the road. So it seems like this project isn't going to cover any of that at this time. However, if problems develop, whether it's respiratory or, or, or just visible signs of mold, mildew, whatever, you'll address it at that point in time.
Exactly.
If I can continue, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Looking at all of the materials, right now you're talking about the, the siding project, next fiscal year, I think it is, for the roof.
Yeah.
That's going to trigger the ADA compliance. Are you folks already undertaking the, the, the assessment or the audit that is required to make sure that your building is fully compatible with that requirement?
So we did, as part of the, as part of the feasibility study for the siding, although that alone won't breach ADA, that did look at what would be required and it was, and I don't have the exact number, but it wasn't, it was a doable project to get to where we needed to be because we are mostly in most places ADA compliant.
So, so that audit was conducted?
Pardon?
That audit was conducted?
No, audit wasn't because it doesn't breach the.
This one doesn't, right, but if you go into next year, it's going to be within a three-year window.
That time will do the audit.
So then you'll have to do the audit?
Yes, exactly.
So, and that's my question, so does it make sense to try to incorporate the audit now so we're looking at for next year?
Well, so that would be part of the feasibility study, which will start with the architect and designer who we're getting on board with in the spring for the roof project.
For the roof project?
Yeah.
So we don't want to incorporate, understanding it's not triggered, but we don't want to incorporate into the siding project? Knowing that it's forthcoming?
Well, well, the roof project is reversible.
37%?
Yeah, so put as much in that as you can.
Well, I, I, yeah, I agree, you know, something's better than nothing, but it would be nice if it was 57%.
I totally agree, yeah.
All right, thank you for that. Specifically to the district, what is your current credit rating?
Is, our current credit rating is, I see, double A? I can't remember, sorry, give me a minute.
No, no.
Ask me your next question and while you're asking that, I will find.
Um, and so, yeah, just along the same lines, what the current debt is for the district?
So, I'm okay, so I have both of the numbers, just give me a minute.
Yeah, take your time.
So the current debt is around 15.6 million, I want to say.
15?
15, 1.5.
1.5, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so as relative to our, you know, as a percentage of our operating, it's a lot smaller than say the towns, which is a lot higher. And our credit rating is, I'm not finding it.
Do you have a cap on, on, on your debt?
No, not in the same way that the town does.
No.
What's the town's credit rating?
Say again?
What's the town's credit rating?
Triple A.
Or double A, just because of how old we are, I believe. We're double A just because of how old, you know, it's a relatively young district.
Yeah, and I know.
I'm going to double check that.
I, I think you're double A plus.
I think we are, yeah.
Which is a big difference.
Yeah, and, and so I know I wasn't sitting here last year, but there was debate and I don't know the, the, either the legalities of it or the process that needs to, you know, happen. But there was debate about whether the town took on the two and a half million or the school took on the two and a half million debt. And so the question is if the town's rating is better, that could potentially save the town money. So that'd be something we'd want to explore, I assume, if we can get, get the, get the money for a little less money in interest rather than the district.
We're going to cap.
Yeah, yeah, no, understood. But, and that goes back, so that leads to my next point, when you talk cap. I understand that the elementary school items go to capital. Does it make sense that all of these items excluding the, the Chatham Elementary School go in capital outlay for review and that way to your point? We can stop putting some of this on our radar globally, because again, one of the things I hope that we can look at in the very near future as a board is our overall debt schedule and where we stand, what's coming on, what's dropping off, and what we can absorb. And not to, you know, go too deep into this, but, you know, clearly one of the things we've been talking about as a board, and I'm sure you're familiar or aware, is the 75-25 split, right? And eventually the town of Harwich is going to cap out and we're going to have to figure out how we pay for things.
Yeah.
And so obviously one of the things we talk about is when it comes to capital projects at the school level, superintendents required whether Chatham had two students or 200 students. The building is required whether they had 50 students or 500 students. So the point to us is we need to explore looking at capital projects more in a 50-50 ratio. But the instructional piece, and then there was a, there was a conversation earlier this evening while you were in your own meeting, the instructional piece makes perfect sense to me on, on per pupil, right? Because we should pay our fair share for the students that we're educating and sending to your district. However, when we talk about the other pieces, again, we're going to start getting, getting close to tapping out our available resources and it's just going to impact not only that we can afford to, to help you with your operating costs, but we can, what we can afford here in the town of Harwich for our operating costs. So not a discussion we need to dig, dig too deep into tonight. In fact, we don't need to dig at all if, if you're not interested, but it's something that needs to happen for everybody's benefit. And I think that covers the list that I had in front of me, so thank you for that information.
Adding on to what Pete said, it's not just 75-25 and it's not just the per pupil cost. Interestingly, and it was not, I'm sure it wasn't planned on Chatham's part or our part, but we're engaging in a massive multimillion dollar sewer project at this point. They already went down that road and it's already paid largely for itself and we're paying for capacity, which actually reduces their load. So our capacity and elasticity to be able to fund some of these things is in a different context, even if we had exactly the same wealth ratio. Because we're adding on something that's a state responsibility, it's not discretionary. And so having said that though, you're going to peel away the siding. I again ask the question, while that's occurring, because mold isn't something you always see as much as you smell it and it affects people. I don't know anybody who's not allergic to mold at some level, when you get to a certain level of measurement. Have you measured the school throughout and if so, what are those results? Because I'd suggest that if you're going to peel away stuff on the outside and there has been no water leaks, you're going to want to know that answer.
Yes, so we've, we have gone into certain rooms when somebody said, hey, I've got, you know, there's a, there's a smell or, you know, if there's, you know, if there's been concerns brought to us. We do have this, you know, so tomorrow we have our first meeting with the group of volunteers from our two towns who have volunteered to be part of the building committee. So we have this as an action item for them to discuss. And we'll be sharing the same, you know, the same indoor air quality reports that we've shared with the board that are also up on our, publicly up on our website.
I say that because there's a, one room, the, each room doesn't have its discrete air feed. And to the extent that, I don't know how your system is designed, but there's a certain percentage of outside air that's introduced into the inside air and we all get to share it. So the question is actually the more global one that I'm asking because the air migrates around the building just by design.
Right, so one of the, one of the conversations that Michael and I've had is to look at having this building committee that, you know, we're, one of the processes we have to go through is vetting a owner's project manager, but also to vet a air, indoor air quality specialist that can go in and do.
Everywhere.
Do, do a larger scale thing. I, I had a com, we had a conversation with our middle school staff just before the vacation where we talked about, you know, that we would be sort of going through and doing, you know, sort of rotating through rooms, through the building while, while we're waiting the siding project to get, you know, to come on, on a monthly basis, sort of doing that testing. The challenge, I think the challenge is, you know, balancing the cost of that testing versus putting, you know, putting the money towards actually fixing the problem. And, you know, I'm very sensitive, like, we want to make sure to have the indoor air quality be the best. We've also been part of webinars that the state has put on through the Mass Department, you know, of public health, where their emphasis is, you know, you know, sink your money and focus it on eliminating the, the water source in, in the building. That, because, you know, the, the testing that we have had done is, you know, is, you know, there have been outdoors, you know, times when you test inside the building, you test outside the building and you're looking to see, you know, how different are the, you know, are the two? You know, the test even outside of our building, given what we're, what we deal with in the Cape is, you know, one, you know, one month they come in and the, the quantity of mold spores per cubic meter might be at 250 and two months later it may be 2,500, you know, just on the out, you know, just on the outdoor air. So you'll see this fluctuation outside and inside. And that's where the state's saying, you know, if you test for mold, you're going to find the mold spores. It's, it's doing that comparison and that's where I think if you want to get it, if, if you bring in somebody, you need to go and do a wide test, but, but also do it, you know, also do it on multiple different, you know, multiple different times. And I think there's, it's, it's an expensive proposition, but again, I think it's an important one to, you know, to understand.
Well, again, we're dealing with kids' health here, so I, I get that, but I will also say that it really doesn't matter that you knew this and you fixed the leak points and everything's fine because mold doesn't go away that way. So if you haven't actually gotten your hands around, if there are any areas that did start growing mold in the wall, it doesn't always get visible initially. Then it doesn't always wind up being in a real accessible spot like at, at our level. I mean, it could wind up being at the sills for the walls. I mean, so the only way for you to actually know that, I, I get what you're saying, but the only way for you to actually know that is like testing.
Yeah.
I mean, it's kind of like putting the horse before the cart. If you start saying, we're going to rip off the siding, we're going to put new Tyvek in, we're going to put flashing in, and we're going to close it all back up without knowing what's inside in the first place. And again, my own history of this was there were a lot of kids getting sick in Harwich Elementary School in the late 90s that precipitated us, you know, voting to just gut the school and start over again. And one of the major motivating factors was that they had poor air exchangers and they really needed to rebuild the system and actually gut asbestos and mold out of the building.
Well, so I'm just going to pick up on that because while we're talking about, you know, looking at the mold, which is obviously an issue and a serious issue, but there's also the commentary in the architect's report about the, the slab that was installed in 1966, I think it was, and then, you know, the new slab that was done in 1996. And it talks about how the damp proofing, the membrane was put on the more recent one, obviously, but they're not sure where else it isn't, so that that's going to be something else looked at. And to me, you know, before you just worry about the wood and worry about what's behind the wood is incredibly important, but what the base is, because to your point of getting rid of carpet, because carpet on slab is not good and maintains moisture. One of the other things that jumps out on me, and, and again, I know it's expensive, but while we're talking about all these different water issues, in this report it talks about the location of the building. And I think it's around the addition, right, E, and, and how wet that area is and that it appears to, you know, be a drainage area in terms of frost fish and everything coming in. So do you know or, you know, what type of storm, you know, what type of drainage you've got there? What drywells can be, some more be installed to help dry out the whole area?
We've actually, I think since that report was done, you know, so anytime, anytime we've had mold folks come in, you know, recommendations that are in those reports, we act on. And one of the things that showed up in one of the reports is, is to look at drainage, you know. You know, so the area that Julie's talking about is this fifth grade, this fifth grade wing where the way it was set up is, you know, the side, you know, the sidewalk area was sort of higher than what's around it. So, you know, so we've brought in a crew that, that put in better drainage systems off of, you know, off of the downspouts that are coming off that building, trying to improve and be able to get more water away from the, away from the building.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So we've done some of that, we've got more coming in February break, so.
And again, you can't speak to the foundation until they really know how much hasn't been proofed, whether.
Yeah.
I have a lot of them.
Do you want to wait or do you want to go?
I might as well go because I'm going to piggyback off all three of your points. And, and I'm, I'm going to preface by saying that I, I, my intention is to not make this uncomfortable. But for me, the safety and the well-being of the parents or the, of the staff and the kids is of the utmost concern for me. In my personal experience, and I went and I toured that building, I, I can't get past that the building is in good condition in this light, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Saw the building. I showed the building to my builder, who's done plenty of work for us over the last five years. He called it a complete disaster. And again, my interest is to not make this uncomfortable, but I'm going to ask my questions because that's what I was elected to do. I went and I visited and thank you for that, Mr. Carpenter, the, the offer to come out and see the school. and see the school. I, I don't have any confidence in the plan put forward, and I'll start with that. Money aside, I don't see a provision in the construction scope of work that calls for, if the school is open, and your staff and your kids are in there, and everyone becomes violently ill because you're disturbing mycotoxins, what do we do then? I don't see six million dollars covering this project, personally. And I don't feel that I want to put my name on something that this board has to then answer to, why, why didn't we do a better job of, of initial investigation? I don't recognize the testing that's been done as testing. And I'll tell you that I've had three adult experiences with mold in my life. One very close family member was ill for three and a half years. No one knew what it was. It was in her house. And it wasn't until a full-blown gut and remediation that she felt better. To, to Mr. Carpenter's point, that, that water twelve years ago was seen in your office, and now you don't see it anymore. I had minor little leaks in my home that I built twelve years ago. I think I told you this on the tour. And you, they were completely unremarkable leaks, until I took out a window that didn't have flashing, one window on the back of my house. I had to rebuild the whole back of my house. The mold, the rot, the, I can't believe the back of the house didn't fall off. So I asked that question earlier about nineteen ninety-seven, or the date ninety-six, or whatever it was. If, if this has been going on since then, I'm very concerned that six million dollars won't touch this project. And, and back to my point, I, safety has to be the utmost concern. And I don't think anybody who sees the pictures of the building, let alone goes and tours it, would say that this build, this building is in dire need of help. The extent of the help is what I'm very concerned with, and I mentioned that. But has there been any sealing off of any of the rooms that were tested that produced a medium air quality mold count, or have, have we, have we quarantined off part of the building at all, moved kids to a, a different section?
So we've, so we've had, we've had times when we've gone into spaces to, you know, to remediate a room and.
Close them off.
And closed, and closed off the space. We had, we had a situation this summer where we had more recently put in some re-split HVAC systems that were, had the condensation line wasn't, wasn't insulated appropriately, and there was water, water coming on the condensation line, so completely different than any sort of siding, unrelated to the siding. But there was, you know, but there were some sealing tiles where these condensation tubes were going up, that we were seeing black. We brought in a mold specialist. The mold specialist, you know, indicated that this, you know, this was this summer, you know, that this is type of mold that you'd want to go and bring in, something like a Servpro, which is, you know, which is where they do go seal off things, and they went and remediated that while no staff were in the building and no students were in the building to address, to address that one.
Do we have the Servpro recommendations or testing results in this packet?
Servpro didn't do the testing, they just did the remediation. We had a separate vendor come in and do the testing before and after, and those are in the packet, yeah.
Let me go to the siding, because that, that seems to be the, I, I read in the report that the roof flashing is on backwards. It's in the report. Why would we put, why would we spend the money on siding when water could infiltrate from the roof into the walls and create the whole problem all over again? So when I, when I go back and I say that I don't have confidence in the plan, I don't have confidence in the plan. I also will bring up that I don't think the parents were notified appropriately. You know, honest, honesty is telling the truth when you're asked a question, but transparency is telling me what I forgot and didn't really even know to ask. I think our parents should have been better informed. I don't think the, from the countless amount of people who I've spoken to over the last two days, ruined my Sunday, I will say, because I was on the phone all day. Public feels unaware, and that they were not made aware of testing, they weren't made aware of the findings. So that, that makes me question the leadership aspect of this. To Julie's point about the carpet, if the concrete slab is in question, you know, I, it's just all, it's all backwards to me, and I'll be just quite honest with you. And, and people are not feeling well, people are sick. I've been told that. And I take that very seriously, being in the business that I was in for the last thirty-seven years. I'd like to know what happens if six million dollars doesn't cover it. I'd like to know what happens between now and when a decision is made to either fund or not fund. I'd like to know what we're doing to keep our staff and our students safe between now and whenever something comes of, of this. And I don't have the confidence right now in what's being done. There's, you, there is, and I, I say this to the both of you, in the hopes that there's, you can see that I'm, I'm certainly emotional about this, but you, you can have no idea what's behind those walls. It's impossible. So your, even your best estimated guess, I wouldn't hold you accountable for as a human being, because it's impossible to know. So when I say that I'm not confident in the testing, there was one air quality test done. I, I see that as neglect. Surface testing? Like, I, I do have experience with this. I, I just don't see that I can put my name on a vote of, of recommending this without beginning the whole process of testing again. More testing to get a better idea of exactly what we're looking at. And I know it's going to cost money, but I can't put a price on our kids' and our staff's health. I know you don't either, so I'm, I'm not, I want to make it really clear, I'm not saying that the two of you are sitting there saying, you know, who cares about the health of everybody? I know that's not the case, but it wasn't mentioned. There's no provision for what happens if you rip apart the walls and everybody gets sick. So I'll stop there, but I've got more to say, I think, after probably Michael and the public, or whatever, so thank you for indulging me.
I'm not going to add a lot. I think they've, I think they've covered it. I'm with Jeff, though. I don't think six point eight million, and we went from two point five to six point eight million dollars in a very short amount of time, and I get you find problems. I applaud you for putting the thirty percent in there, because I thought that was kind of aggressive in the beginning, but I don't think we have a clue what's behind those walls. And I think that the word emergency should be on, on the top of all of our heads, because we are sending our kids there. So I think we got a lot more work to do, but in the short term, we have to do some emergency testing and make sure the people that are going in that building are safe, and then come to a real number. The conversation with Chatham is, is completely different, but it is time that, and, and I've been saying it for two, two and a half years now, that Chatham's never going to agree, as they've proven in the last meeting our chair had with them, to pay more money. And Tanner Howard probably unanimously, unanimously will support Chatham paying more money, but we're never going to get there unless we go to town meeting with an article and get there, and then ask Desi. But we're not getting to any agreement. Pete, Pete had a great idea on capital, and if we can get there on capital, but if this is fourteen million dollars, it's worth it if the kids and the teachers are safe. Looking back only gives you a sore neck. We didn't get a great deal out of this regionalization, because there was no real homework done on that building. I can't find anything on, on analysis as to what we're done on the buildings before we, before we merge. Still think the merger was a great thing, but Chatham got a really good deal and Harwich did not. So six point eight million goes to town meeting, I certainly would support it if I thought it was going to fix it. Otherwise, I'd rather hear from you that there's a lot more work to be done, and the moisture around the building, and then once you start knocking on walls and loosening all that up, it's, it's real that it's going to get into the ventilation system and spread through that school. So to Jeff's point, what is the provision? Not necessarily if everybody gets sick, but what if it starts to happen, how are we going to fix it? And thirty percent's not going to cover it. And I'll stop there, I've got equal amount of questions in paper as Jeff, but I don't think we're there yet. But I think we have a lot more work to do, and quickly. And, and really, the work now should be, are the teachers and the kids safe to go in that school? And I don't believe we've done that testing, or we're not seeing it on our screen. That's it.
Thank you. And, and just going back, and not to beat this up continuously, but just back to the conversations on the foundation, et cetera. You know, I'm just looking at one of the reports from November sixth, two thousand twenty-three to Rick Travers, and this is from Marina Park. Where on the first page, you know, there's talk about all the issues with the slab and et cetera, and goes into detail, and I'm not going to read it all. But, but one thing called out here is about really assessing that situation even more than just the trim and the sheathing and all of that, because the last paragraph is, "In light of avoiding substantial demolition and reconstruction, it's advisable to explore all practical, practical alternatives that could provide temporary respite, delaying the need for more significant renovations that would require district approval and allocation of significant funds." So I, I think, you know, you're hearing that we understand the project and the depth and the work that you've put in, but we also understand how serious mold is, how important the air quality is, and as you do, I know you do. But, you know, I think we need to look not just at the rot and what's behind there in terms of mold, because that's a hugely important question, but I think we really need to look, you know, more and more at the actual foundation, and whatever we can do, because if we're going to spend six and a half million, only come back in ten years or even five years to say it's still not better. And then the drainage, if that could continue to be improved, because anytime, as you guys know, I know you know all this, but water is going anywhere near the building. If you already have proof that half of it isn't even waterproofed, then there's a dire need to get that water as far away as possible, but there's another need to look at that foundation before you even worry about what you're going to put on top. And so I think you're hearing from this board that price tag is hard to swallow, but at the same token, we want it done well and right. And there is a much larger conversation that we've been having as a board, we had an initial conversation, and, you know, how, how do we get to a more amenable terms of the larger, is a much larger conversation. But for this building, I think it's imperative that the students and the staff and yourselves, everybody in that building is going to a healthy environment. And I know you want that, we want the realistic cost, so let's really look at this feasibility study and dig in deep.
If I'm, just to piggyback on that, this is a really big building. I, I don't know how much of the building is truly utilized or needs to be utilized, but if we, I'm, I'm so concerned and so focused on what are we doing right now with our staff and our kids, that if part of the building, the newer part of the building is healthy, and we can seal off another part of the building, and move, as uncomfortable as it will be for everybody, unless there's a better option, move everybody into the healthy side of the building, we need, we need an expert in this area. And, and to the people who are donating their time for the volunteer group, my hat's off to them. But unless you can show me a qualified expert on, on how to make the immediate future, like tomorrow, safe for our kids and the staff, it's, it's going to be hard for me to get past that, to even consider funding siding. I, I think the whole building needs to be looked at, to be quite honest with you, not just a siding, it is not a siding project. So I, I'm, I'm putting it out there, on the record. What are we doing tomorrow? What are we going to do to, to fix the immediate need, because people are sick? Thank you.
Thank you. Don?
I'm going to build on what Jeff just said. I'm more of the process guy, in, in a way. It, you not only have to examine the magnitude of the project more closely, and I do agree with both Jeff and Michael and Pete, that this could well wind up being one of those whoops projects, where we wind up doubling the cost when we start opening things up. But as a matter of process, we're sitting here talking to you, we have no jurisdiction over you directly, none. I mean, there'll be an ask, and if you, if you're good at the Ouija board, you can tell that the ask probably isn't going to get a positive vote at this point in time, despite the fact that we feel that it's a, it's a compelling problem. So the next step in my mind is, we leave the room, and this is to Jeff's comment, we engage with the school committee as soon as possible, and then after that, start opening up a conversation, which is the second, second paragraph of this, which is, what's equitable to be able to pay? Because we took over a Chatham building that we're going to wind up paying seventy-five percent to fix, and apparently some of these things were latent deficiencies of the construction, like with upside-down flashing or not at all flashing. We had no participation in that, none at all. I mean, and I get that they think that we're trying to have buyers regret over the deal we made with them, but the reality is, I've said this before, and I'll say it again, if you get into territory where we start looking like we're going to be D Y and start getting into overrides, it's an ugly path, and it doesn't serve anybody well. What we're looking for is the highest quality education, comma, that we can afford. So that's a mutual problem that we have, and Chatham's resistance to having that conversation is something that we can address after we talk to the school committee, because they have the jurisdiction over the buildings, and they, I assume that they've got some concerns with their self, with themselves, I'd like to have them come in and have that discussion with us in a joint meeting. And then at some point in time, we have to have that conversation with the other town's board, because as Mr. Goodson has pointed out in the past, there is absolutely a disparity in the wealth of the communities, you know, that, you know, it, it doesn't line up at seventy, we're seventy-five percent of the wealth of the area. That doesn't happen at all. But if I'm on the other side, and I know I paid for my sewer, I paid for, I'm getting a bill cheap deal on the schools, as a matter of fact, I'm still operating at less than I was before we regionalized, I wouldn't want to change it either. But there's a compelling reason to, because this thing is going to wind up being a major problem. We're talking about, I think, I think we all agree, we're talking something north of Tendley, and it's not, it's not four. I mean, and if you put that within the context of us spending ten million here and twenty million there for sewer, I don't know how we get to do that, and still function as a town with anything else that needs to happen. So Pete's idea was a brilliant idea. It doesn't matter. When you are open for business as a school, it doesn't matter whether it is twenty kids or fifty kids, you're not going to conduct the school in a parking lot. There has to be a building, there has to be heat, there has to be lighting. So to that extent, we share our burden to provide all those things, and then the pro-rata part of that is the operational disparity, that we present more of a load to the teaching staff than the other community. But those are two separate conversations, and we never have had that other conversation. I, I said at the time, the deal with the elementary schools was not the final deal. It, it certainly helped the exacerbation, the disparity for a moment, but not if we have to put three new boilers in the, in the Harwich Elementary School, as well as fix this. Then, then we're on the, we're really on the hook for a massive amount of capital funding. So again, I'd love to have, I see a couple of members, and it isn't their, it isn't their fault either. Let's make, say it all that publicly, but the question is, all right, now that we know there is a problem, where are we going to go? How are we going to resolve it? And what's the most equitable way of doing that? Has to start through the school committee, because they have jurisdiction over the assets and your, and your activities.
Thank you, Don. Did you have a question?
I guess, just before we wrap up, I mean, I think, you know, I would like to start by saying, like, we, I mean, we really appreciate the challenge, absolutely, but the amount of support we hear for the schools, the students, and the welfare of the staff. I mean, so, you know, absolutely, can we be challenged in the questions and decisions we made, but have they always been, ever understanding the best interests of the district? The answer is yes. It was always the right decision, but we did it, and the, you know, we're, we're, and just, you know, there have been, I mean, numerous air quality tests over the last, air quality and surface tests over the last two years. and surface tests over the last two years to try and, you know, so, because there's two issues. There's long-term systemic solutions needed to that building, like replacing the siding, right? But I, we agree, like, we're working every day to ensure that air quality and the conditions that staff and students are in that classroom as good as they can be without, and so we're testing the air, but we're identifying where there's leaks, we're fixing leaks, we're drying them out, we're putting in dehumidifiers, we're ensuring the moisture levels are the right level, the temperature. Is it an, are we always there? No, because it's an ongoing challenge because of the building. We're replacing floor, we remove vegetation from around the building, we moved, you know, we fixed water, we fixed the X-VAC systems, we're replacing, you know, we meet with the staff twice a week, every two weeks to identify where more problems there might be, we're replacing ceiling tiles. Just don't want you to go away from this meeting to say, we're sitting on our hands waiting for the siding project to be done. That's absolutely not the case. Should we be doing more? Yes. Are we going to be doing more tomorrow? Absolutely. We have like a plan to have, you know, routine repeated air quality tests, because we do, we are doing those air quality tests, they don't always show high readings. So we do them again to see where they are, because air quality tests are invariably, they change. So you open a window and it's bad in one place, you close the window, it's okay, but the, you know, so if somebody walks in and brings stuff in with them, that's always an issue. So there's, but we're building, because we're doing repeated air quality tests throughout the building, we're building up a picture of where the worst places are. So I, it's, so I guess, I just, I don't want to, I don't want you to walk away from this meeting thinking that we're not doing anything. We're doing a ton of stuff, as I say, we keep doing it, you know, we're, we're getting more information every time, and that's part of the reason we're getting all these challenges is because we're able to give you so much information, what it looks like behind those tiles. We didn't know that six months ago, but we've done the work to get there, and we'll keep pushing, we'll collect more information. I appreciate, I mean, so yeah, it's a challenge for us. What's behind every tile? We just don't know, and that's, and yeah, we're trying to draw the line, and I guess you're saying you should draw the line a little further, so we do more testing so you know more. At some point, we have to draw a line and say, okay, that's the scope of the project, and now we're going to bid. But yeah, I guess that was my.
So when I went to the school and I saw all the work that had been done outside, it was remarkable. I think Rick, you know, he's constantly, he's putting in a great effort. But there does come a point in time where the building is just so unhealthy, and the evidentiary proof with people being ill, leaving the building, and feeling better when they go away and come back and then feel ill again, there comes a point in time where you just have to look at it from a different perspective and more from a bigger picture, right? And then the last thing I'll say, maybe before the public gets up and has their opportunity is, I really want the public to be notified and kept up to date, and information overload to the public of what you're doing, when you're doing it, how you're doing it, what the results are. Because at the end of the day, that's who we all work for, and we all know that. So thank you.
Thank you.
And so let me go to the public, anyone in the audience, before I go to online.
Sure, come on up. Courtney Wittenstein, 22, Mary Beth Lane. Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. I'm a Harwich resident and a mom of two, who are both in Montemoy schools. My son Nolan is a sixth grader at the middle school. I wrote a letter to this board, the Chatham Select Board and the school committee, on Friday, explaining my situation, my concern for mold in the middle school. My son has been out of school six since Thanksgiving break. He's had major respiratory issues. We've been to Boston Children's three times and have had two, have two more appointments this month. Today, I sent him back to the middle school for half-days, pretty hesitant. I made a post, I was the social media person that was talked about earlier, that has stirred a lot of, you know, conversation up, which is good, it's healthy. But I did make a post on Friday with the letter I wrote to all of you, and I've heard from endless amounts of concerned parents who have sick kids with mysterious illnesses and who leave the building and come back feeling healthy. I've also heard from countless faculty members and just concerned citizens, and also thankful for all the leaders in Chatham and Harwich and the school committee that have reached out to me as well. But the concern that I have heard about these illnesses and just, it's astounding. The only reason I knew about the potential mold situation is because I work for The Chronicle, and we've published a few articles regarding the water damage. So I started digging, and there are a few points here that I want to make. I think I can speak on behalf of most Montemoy parents in saying that we are extremely disappointed in the lack of transparency and communication over this topic. On the EPA website, it gives a checklist for mold remediation in schools or large businesses. The second bullet point says, "Communicate with building occupants at all stages of the process," and then goes on to read, "To designate a person for questions, comments about medium or large scale remediation if needed." I never saw any communication on this at all. If a school was being tested for mold and came back with a severe air quality levels, which happened in August, we should have known about this back in August. There are air quality reports posted online that are completely buried. I consider myself technically savvy, I build websites for a living, and I had trouble finding them. There is also a mold report that I got my hands on from last summer. It wasn't until I called, talked to Jeff Handler, that he then shared the most recent report. Number two is, I also want to know what the plan is, kind of what you all mentioned. Then there's a plan in place for the siding and the roof, but what is the plan right now? After doing some research and having some experts look at the reports over the weekend, we have reason to believe that our kids and teachers are not safe. I'll let Steve, my friend Steve Swain is going to come up and talk about that as well. There was some remediation done, but what are we doing to ensure that it continues? Is that part of the budgeting? We have a task force full of builders and well-known residents who are very respectable, but however, we don't have one mold specialist that I've seen or scientist on that task force. Number four, putting up siding and replacing a roof is completely different than mold remediation. You say that you're doing the current work now with maybe doing some mold remediation that I've seen in that mold report, but if you stir up any mold instructions, that's when it becomes airborne and dangerous. Are we planning on doing this work with our kids in the school? That is a major health hazard. People who handle mold are supposed to be in hazmat suits. The library was closed for water damage, as so I hear, and classrooms have had to move, so I also hear. Was air testing done on any of those rooms that were closed? As a parent of a child who has been chronically ill now, and as a mom who cares about every kid in that school and teachers who protect our kids and teach them every day, they all deserve a better, healthier, cleaner environment. We are calling for urgent actions to be taken tonight, because I think this could really be a potential public emergency for our towns. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Board. Steve Swain, 10 Cornixon Road in Harwich. I just wanted to, I participated with Courtney and focused on the mold reports. I took that mold report, which was from a company called Safe &amp; Dry, which does not actually show up anywhere on the internet. You can't find anything about Safe &amp; Dry unless you dig deep and find out that Safe &amp; Dry is actually, this person who runs it, also runs a company called Healthy Fresh Air, My Valera, and Mold Proactive, which are three different companies. They primarily sell remediation machines, and they are demonstrating the difference in mold companies where there are test-only companies, which come in and they test for mold, they provide no remediation, they are, they consider it to be a conflict of interest for a mold testing company to also offer remediation, because it's a marketing strategy. So that company did provide the, sorry, I got off my notes, that company provided the report, which I then took to a test-only company and had them review the report. That report, or that test, was done with 17 different locations. Of those 17 locations, they did swab testing, which is surface testing. This is according to the, to the report. So basically, they take a test and they determine what was on that surface. The testing that the test-only companies advocate for is disturbed air testing, which is, they go into a room, they set up fans that kick up everything in the room into the air, and then they sample the air. That's what needs to be sampled, because that's what people are breathing. The surfaces are irrelevant when it comes to air quality. So that, they did one, one air quality test, but it was not done with disturbed air. It was just an air quality test, and coincidentally, it came out severe in one room. So that was one room, and the other rooms were swab testing, which came out acceptable, apparently. Kind of indicates the possibility that maybe if all of the rooms were tested with, with the disturbed air testing, you're going to get an honest review of what your, what the air quality is. So my, my question to all this is, considering the fact that my son, who is in the school, who's also experienced medical issues, and wound up at Children's, and just the same story, there should be testing being done tomorrow, because if there are levels that are consistent with severe, they shouldn't be in the building. These, these kids, the staff should not be in that building breathing that air until it's, there's something done. So basically, what I'm, that's my entire point, is that moving forward, what are we going to do and when are we going to do it? You see all these things about fiscal year '26 and fiscal year '27. What about tomorrow and getting a mold? Nauset Environmental is the, is the company, they've done work for all the Nauset School System, the Charter School. They are willing to show up tomorrow and do one room, retest one room that's been swab tested with a, with a disturbed air, or maybe this weekend when, you know, when there's no kids in the school, no staff. They're willing to do that, their, their fees are very reasonable, and my thought was, have them go in, test one room that's already been swab tested, and look at the difference. And if it's considerable, then start talking, getting a proposal for them, from them to test all of the rooms. Basically, though, that, what I'm asking you to do is, as a board, determine how the funding could that be, for that could be brought about in a really fast manner, like this weekend. And I'm sure that that company wouldn't say, we need to get paid right now when we come in. I'm sure that they would be happy to take payment in a month, but we need to get that testing done tomorrow, the next day, real soon, because I can't feel safe sending my kid to that school after what he's been through and then watching what everybody else is saying. And the fact that everybody's sitting around talking about this, knowing that there's staff and kids in that school, it blows my mind, because, you know, it's like if there's a building on fire, and it's like, all right, well, we need to talk this and that about putting this fire out, but meanwhile, while we're talking to those people, go back in there, it's okay, it's on fire, but we'll get it out in a year, you know? This needs to get taken care of, like this one. And that's just the testing part, just so that everyone knows. You know, the transparency angle, that would, that would help with that, too.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public want to speak?
Oh, I can't see above there. Okay, Sharon Fleeger, Harwich. I am the chairperson of the Board of Health, and this has nothing to do with the Board of Health. All right, I'm going to speak as a resident. My background is a microbiologist, and I also, in the hospitals, and I also was certified in infection control. And one of the things that we had to deal with is the black mold. So when we start to talk about air quality, there's going to be spores and mold in the air. You're never going to get rid of it, it's outside. And to me, there's a big difference between the mold and spores that you're going to get from outside versus the black mold, which is called Stachyboitris. The one problem with that is that it gives off a toxin, which is really what is going to make you sick. If that gets into the walls, all right, you're not just going to dry that out and have it go away. You're going to have to cut it out. We closed down two nursing homes because of that. You had to get the patients out. You can't block off, say, oh, we found it here, and you're going to block that section off, because that air has already circulated, all right? You're never, it's going to be very, very difficult to get rid of that. You need to find out whether it's in the walls, or you would find it in the carpeting, most likely it's going to be in the walls. And you will need, you need to distinguish between that and other mold, and other mold, because the molds that you, that people have with allergies, which are very common in this type of the year, all right, they're going to be outside. You can reduce the amount inside. That isn't really going to be where the issue is coming from, it's going to come from the black mold. That's going to be your issue. So if they're doing just quantity, isn't going to tell you what is really there, and that's what you need to know, is what species is there? If it's the black mold, and from the sounds of it, and I haven't read any of the reports, so I don't, I'm not talking about what's in the reports, because I don't know, but if you don't know what that mold is, you really don't know what's, what's causing some of this sickness. And if it is Stachyboitris, it's going to be the toxin that's doing it. And from the sounds of it, if there's enough kids that are sick, you've got a real, real problem there. And to what they're saying, to let it go, you need to know now. So you need to get someone in that's not just going to give you how much, or the quality of the air, of the number of spores, you need to, and the mold, you need to know what is there, what is actually there causing this. And if it is a Stachyboitris, you've got a problem. It's because it's not going to be easy to get rid of, trust me. So I'm just putting that out there, that I think, I'm not saying that people are negligent, I'm just saying, from my experience, it's tough, and you need to get a person in that really needs, that knows what they're looking for. And I would agree with the gentleman that just spoke, you don't want somebody that's also going to give you the remediation. That's not going to work. And to dry it out isn't, because as soon as you get a little bit of moisture, I'm not even talking about leaks, I'm talking moisture. That mold and mildew likes to grow in moisture, whether it's a total leak or just moisture. So if it's, if it's in, if it's in the walls, if it's in anything inside there, you have to remove, remove that and replace it before you're going to clear it up. So just keep that in mind, like I said, that you need somebody that is really going to tell you what is there, not how much, but what. So, you know, I, I can identify with how you would feel if the kids are really being sick, you really need, you need to move on it. So that's just my, from my background, so thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. And I guess just because we're asking the question about how quickly can you do some air testing, and I think the school committee has a meeting Thursday, is that right? So is that a conversation you can have also with the school committee, and how quickly you can?
It's on the agenda.
Oh, great, okay, good.
And to, and to also, Sharon brought up a good point, you know, when Jeff was asking, you know, have the bend times that we've sealed things up, the, if I'm correct, and correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, but this summer, when we were dealing with what was happening on those condensation tubes, and, you know, the, the person who, who we've had come in, that Steve was talking about, Frank Solinsky, he does, it's not just total morphose, he, you know, give you, his, his testing gives you a rundown of what type, and, and it was determined that what was in the, the ceiling tiles, that turning them red was what Sharon described, and that's where we brought in ServPro to go and interest. And so when we've had Stachy, it's been a, you know, it's been, it was only during the summer that we had it, but that's when we brought him in, or not, not Frank, but Frank tested, you know, Frank tested, didn't do the remediation, ServPro did the remediation for him.
Is there a report from ServPro on that remediation?
Not from ServPro, but from the, there's testing in the, in the, on the website and in the pack of the testing done before and after the remediation.
I did see something. Anybody else from the public want to speak before I go online?
Just one question, if I could.
Sure, go ahead.
There is no central HVAC in that building, so that's kind of a saving grace, that it's not, right?
So it's room by room.
Room by room.
It's unit vents, so, so every room has its own unit.
Thank you.
Jamie, is there anyone online looking to speak? Can you tell?
I don't have any requests right now.
Okay. All right. Any other board members have any of the follow-ups? Or no? Okay. So thank you for coming tonight, thanks for listening, and certainly know that you've been working hard, and just real concerns for the families.
Thank you. You're a piece of that.
Thank you. And back to new business, item A.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you and the members may recall, back on December 2nd...
As you and the members may recall, back on December 2nd, you had voted to name Ed Edward Spellman as interim finance director town accountant, and that was to be effective immediately. He was replacing Eric Kinsherf, who was interim prior. Since then, the town has executed an updated agreement with Kinsherf Associates. However, you still need to re-energize the appointment of Mr. Spellman for a period of time. Additionally, I will tell you that Angelique McGibben and I, while Angelique and I met today, we have the position statement completed. The board will be getting, I believe, tomorrow, the scope of engagement from the search consultant. I have no changes or disagreements with the search scope of engagement. The outstanding question we're asking her, though, is to confirm what the total dollar amount would not exceed for that engagement. And remember, Ms. Shanley is going to be the search consultant receiving the resumes. We have re-energized the applicant, the the job notice itself. We will further energize that with the position statement, but we'll receive two more credible candidates or two credible candidates thus far. So the first thing that needs to happen is we need to have an interim finance director town accountant for a period of time. The recommendation would be that you extend Mr. Spellman effective immediately, and I would obviously take any direction from you on the timeframe you want to do.
Thank you, Joe. And just not to lose sight of the fact that we also talked about the the reports that Eric had mentioned in his last meeting.
So Mr. Kinsherf is financial consultant for the town. So I Ed and I are meeting tomorrow. We'll follow up
Perfect.
With Eric on those outstanding items. If I could very quickly, I know it's not related to this, but I did assign staff on the golf committee, excuse me, the golf fund, not the golf committee. So I hope that that may already be in my inbox. If not, we should have that very soon.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a time period that the board favors in terms of taking action on this?
Before we before we have a motion, just for clarification, Joe, if you could, so looking at the December 16th agreement, it does list Ed Spellman as the interim finance director within the agreement. And then it does list June 30th, 2025, as the the end agreement date, so December 17th through June 30. So you still feel we need to, even though this explicitly states Ed Spellman will serve as interim finance director?
Yes, because in in your minutes for December 2nd, it was understood that there'd be a new contract, but the board on on your vote was to name Ed until for a 30-day timeframe pending the agreement. So we didn't do the vote on December 16th.
We did not?
Correct.
Oh, okay. My confusion. I thought we did vote.
It was my understanding from staff and and the notes that we approved the contract, but we didn't do the affirmative statement
Oh, okay, the affirmative statement.
For his appointment.
I assumed because he was within the scope of work that it was fine, but you needed an actual
Belt and suspenders.
I'm okay.
I think given the
Just want to clarify. So with that said, Madam Chair, I move to
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Not listening to you anymore.
Tells you how engaged I was in my conversation.
It's good.
So I moved to Mr. Chair, I moved to appoint Ed Spellman Jr. as the interim finance director and town accountant with an immediate appointment set to expire June 30, 2025.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Your your chair pro temp, but that's okay.
I think we'll wait for Julie to come back with the motion in a second. Let her vote.
Eight thirty-two, Mr. Chair.
It's on her. She'll go late.
Call in favor.
Hi.
Hi. Four zero, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Somebody please let Julie know what she goes to.
And then, Mr. Chairman, I think that brings you to old business A as the next item on your agenda. And to that item, you have in the packet a rough draft that I did at the direction of the board. And so then, Mr. Chair, turn it over to you and your colleagues for discussion on that matter. Does the board want to have any discussion? I see that we have somebody in the audience who may want to speak to this. Yeah? We'll hear from the we'll hear from the public here first. Get the info straight. Just state your name, please.
Sure. Peter Freeman, attorney. For the record, Peter Freeman, representing the applicant, the Pine Oak villages village folks. The only thing I wanted to say is I respect your right to look into things. You followed the process. You sent a letter with many more comments in addition to your questions about the parcels and control to executive officer of housing and livable communities. That's, of course, appropriate. That's part of the process. We have full confidence that when we are at the zoning board of appeals, we will address all of that. And the same thing goes if there are questions about what you have raised. What you didn't mention, I don't think in past discussions, is the letter that I sent with attached to it, it was October 28th, the letter from one of the preeminent title attorneys in the state that went through all the parcels, addressing what the assessor had stated, and very clearly stated that his opinion, one of the best title attorneys in the state, is yes, we do have control of the site. There are questions on the assessor's records and not criticizing them. There are sometimes discrepancies or on the Cape, parcels unknown, that happens. But that's why we hired this attorney to do detailed title research, and we have either purchased now or have agreements with the owners that have been revealed by the title research. So that's really all that I feel we need to say. I'm sure you agree this isn't trial court. It's not a place where title is going to be tried. So again, I respect your right to say, okay, you have questions. And we have the right to do what we did, which was proactive, doing a lot more than normally is done. So again, we look forward to talking to the ZBA and trying to move the project forward. And, you know, keep in mind, it's a it's a great group of nonprofit folks who have done the previous phases. They have a sincere community desire as residents and people trying to just help create affordable housing. So again, I don't say that to say that means you don't ask questions. We're very comfortable that we've done the right thing and that the project eligibility letter should issue. And any questions can be taken up, although again, I would say the same thing. The zoning board isn't a place to try title either. We have colorable title. That's all that's required, even in the zoning board, for if there are title questions. So that's really all I want to say. We respect the process, but you know, if you feel this way, you want to send another letter that says the same thing, that's your prerogative. So thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, just for clarification and thank you for for being here, Richard Goldar is the attorney
Yes.
That you're referencing. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or?
If I if I may. I I support sending the letter. And I I would also support, Joe specifically, thank you for for writing the letter. I think you I think you nailed it. The the part that you left blank for the board to to add some words to would be, in my opinion, an ask of this board to not issue an opinion on the letter of eligibility until they prove that they own it. With all due respect to the past attorney that talked, the attorney that he references may be the best in the world. He represents the client. And right now, our assessing records do not jive with theirs, nor are they paying taxes. So as we talk about character of the applicants and neighbors, I question that because nothing has been done to try and straighten out any of any of the public's concerns. We're just going forward with the 40B the way that they want it and everything that they want without listening to the public whatsoever.
Mr. Chairman, could I just make a quick response?
Madam Chair, now.
Yeah, we I'm sorry. Yes, I realize you're
I might be better off as Mr. So
Madam
She hit as long as she could. She's back.
You know, I wouldn't have gotten back up except, sir, you know, you just said question the character. That's unkind and it's unfair. There is no question of character, be it of me or Mr. Goldar. He's not a hired gun. He wouldn't issue an opinion if he hadn't satisfied himself as to his professional standards. So I just have to say, I really don't think that's appropriate to say. I will also point out that in proving title, assessor's records are not accepted evidence. It's not criticizing anybody, as I said before, but that's just the way it is. So that's why I got up. And again, I have no problem with you sending a letter. That is your prerogative. But please understand and respect where we are.
Thank you. Do you have any comments?
Yep. We've been down this road enough where there are tire tracks on it now. We sent the letter and identified our concern about ownership. I've said in the past that PNSs include contingencies that may have included title work that isn't available to our assessor's office. But if everybody's hell-bent on doing something, I'd say, I mean, from my perspective, the letter is extremely strident. I mean, page one, paragraph two, Mid Cape, we're compelled to write that as of this writing Mid Cape does not have control. It really, based on the lack of conclusive evidence, because we haven't gotten to see any title abstracts at all. And that was always the problem in the area. There were multiple properties that were being stitched together to form a larger property to be able to do something on. What we should have been saying is we believe the Cape Mid Cape may not have control specifically and then go on with the letter. We also enclose the town of Horwich sentence goes on, I say they really should say the town believes this to be a false assertion. Making these emphatic statements without proof is it's going to be embarrassing to us if it turns out that that's not true. We're still putting them on notice. I don't even think we need to write them again. We've already said that that was part of our contention in our original response to them. There is a mistake, though, in the letter. The last paragraph says a regulated review. You mean a regulatory review, I'm pretty sure.
Sure, there could be a number of mistakes. This is a draft
Okay.
For you folks to tear apart.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is I I believe that their function is to perform a regulatory review, not a regulated review. The only other sentence I say that I have real problems with is despite the fact that we believe clear evidence, despite this clear evidence the applicant continues to put forth that they in fact presently have control of the site, I say that I can't support anything more than despite what we believe to be clear evidence that the applicant does not have control over the entire site. And it really would just reaffirm our concerns from the first letter. We don't have any conclusive evidence. We have assertion, and it may be a good assertion. I don't know whether it is or not. But I mean, to start actually making flinging things that have imperatives in them and saying these people don't have anything and making allegations that may or may not be true, I feel I'd feel embarrassed if we wound up finding out that they really did do title work and that they really have the ability to stitch together disparate properties, some of which had fractured titles, some of which, I mean, I have experienced myself going back when the playground was being built and the the property that the Cape Verdean zone has no frontage. I mean, it was always a broken property. And we couldn't use it as such. But I'm well aware, because I had to do some research back in the 90s over this, that there were a lot of different problems in these things. I'm not sure because I didn't sit in on any of this stuff. I know that there were a number of different entities involved, and I'm not sure what work you've done in order to be able to, you know, say go in and get an A and R and wipe out lot lines and then start over again, which would be what you'd be working with if you were going to ZBA. It's possible. It's an applicant has the ability to do that and grab properties, perfect the titles, and then move on with the project. The person who would know if it had been submitted this way would be the planner. But I don't think you've gotten that far. So I don't want I feel uncomfortable making any more allegations other than we believe and it appears to us.
Cape, did you have any comments?
Couple thoughts. I'm not going to share them, no. The as far as as far as the overall letter, and I think, you know, the applicant's attorney stated, you know, the fact that we've already sent one, that they have no objection, we'll send them another one. And I understand his point with that. Overall, I don't have a problem sending another letter as well. The part that stuck out to me and Michael, before I lose my thought, the part where Joe was looking for board direction, you had said something a few minutes ago that I liked whatever you said. If you could repeat that if you have it written down, that'd be great. But before I wrap up, the only piece that I struggled with is where it goes into, I think it's paragraph five, and I think it was the paragraph Don was actually talking about. Second half of it talks about the town strenuously objects to the false assertion and has directed counsel to cease and desist. From that point on, I I prefer to delete that whole section. And more importantly, I'm not even sure we have the ability to instruct them to cease and desist from from the clarity that's their property. You know, we may encourage them to to cease and desist, but I don't believe we have the the ability to to enforce that. So that that particular section where it starts, the town strenuously objects to the end of the sentence, a paragraph, I would remove.
Thank you, Pete.
Madam Chair, if I could, for the for the record, and well, let me say by, I would recommend that anything after the salutation of dim is froly wachtel and then ahead of thank you for your attention is wide open for editing and destruction and reconstruction, however the board says it. However, with regard to that particular paragraph, the only thing that I believe needs to be corrected is the statement that the message was conveyed earlier this month. Given that this was written in December, this is a fact that occurred. Your counsel working on staff and select board guidance, I believe, had a conversation with the applicant's counsel based on commentary that board members talked about following a community forum hosted by the applicant. I have zero pride of ownership with any of this.
And I'm
But it does present what I understood the facts to be.
And I'm not saying that it didn't occur. I'm my only point is I don't think it needs to be part of the the letter. And because again, I don't think we hold any weight with that anyway, so I don't think it's going to influence the the Commonwealth in any way, shape, or form. That's my two cents.
If it were to survive, we'd still have to make that edit.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, real quick. Yes, Amy Questle did call me, and I told her, number one, that any insinuation, never mind specific statement, that my client was intentionally making misstatements publicly at that meeting, it's off the wall, simply not the case. There was a question of misidentification of zero, the street address, whether it's zero or 51, which is irrelevant as to quality of title. And Amy hadn't seen Mr. Goldar's letter. So, you know, I've worked a lot with Amy. I respect her. I think she respects me. And I said, thank you, but I can assure you, you know, we've gone forward in good faith, just as I told you. So I responded to her, and there was nothing further for us to do. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, yeah, well, sorry, did I not?
No, that's okay. I I just, you know, for me, I listen, you know, Pete, Don, Michael, for me, there seems to be a discrepancy between our assessing office and the applicant's position. I'm wondering how we how do we figure that out? What's the mechanism to come into an agreement?
I think you heard some of what what Richard was in here earlier, the miscellaneous process of
Sure, sure.
You have names, but you don't have locations because you don't have plans.
Sure.
So I think, you know, that's the difficulty in all this, is our assessing records versus somebody doing title research and et cetera. So how do you make the two come together? Back to Don's earlier point about how these all get documented and recorded and eventually make their way into the system to clean up those records. So it is, it's such a lengthy process.
It's tough, and and I understand that, but we represent the town, and the town's position is that there's a discrepancy, at least in my opinion as I sit here now, to the applicant's position. You know, maybe what we should do is see a revision of the of the draft?
That was going to be what I was going to
Then I'll let you take over from here.
Well, no.
No, I'm
Do you have any other revisions far what was discussed already?
No.
Because then we could ask Joe to make those. But go ahead.
I've got them in writing, but when I, I mean, I've been involved in as a provider for affordable housing, and you folks on the end have done purchases, PNSs. You know that they have conditions in them, that they get executed. The choke point isn't here. The choke point's always when you get in front of the town plan The choke point's always when you get in front of the town planner and says, "Show me that you have the ability to close on these deals should we actually do a site plan review." We never get involved in those types of transactions. They have to prove to the planner, and ultimately is ZBA, that they can attain clear title to all the properties that they want to do something on. And it's then that we're on notice about whether the properties are encumbered in some way that can't be undone. But we're not at that point now. They haven't gone in front of anybody, other than to ask for a Pell letter, which we sent, and it was kind of, it wasn't complimentary. It basically said, "We're not sure that these folks have control." They're on notice. And until you get to the point where there's actually a review of a proposal, a real proposal that shows on the ground it's going to be here, and that's when the town planner can say, "I don't believe that, and it doesn't match up with anything, and you don't have the ability to build on these," that's when you got my attention. But we're not at that point now. We're just presuming that since, that they have not come in with a fresh site plan that shows where all these things are, and I get that, like, Zero may not exist on their assessor's database, that doesn't mean the land doesn't exist, and that doesn't mean that they can't perfect a buildable area. Right now, that's been the problem for, what, decades now, is that the whole area was so messed up that nobody could do anything except for maybe one or two parcels, because they were landlocked or they couldn't be proven. But once you had everybody who owned everything lined up with conditional PNSs, that winds up putting the onus back on them to go in and say, "Okay, this is what we believe that we can attain title to, to build on for site plan, and that's the basis upon hearing it." I can guarantee you, our planning department will not consider anything that you don't own, and that you have no commitment to own.
No, but one clarification on that that I will say is that I learned a while ago, which is that, you know, once the title research is done in a way that the deeds are recorded, et cetera, to your point, the planner could certainly say, "This is what assessing has. This is what you say you have." But the final is when the engineer stamps the plan, and that's, that's who's going to say, "They own this land."
Oh, we don't have that.
We don't have that. So I'm just pointing out that it won't be our planner who says, "Okay, you own all that." She could point out discrepancies. But when that stamped engineered plan is in front of any board, that's when they would say, "We're going to accept this, because we're not doing the title research." So I just want to make that clarification. So is the board in, oh, sorry.
And I'm in favor of Pete's striking that line. But I, and where I disagree with Don on this is, they're asking for a letter of eligibility for mass housing on an entire project now, and they're sidestepping a lot of the town regulatory by going to a 40B. They're taking the control away from us. This is an opportunity to be heard, and this is something that we have voted in the past that hasn't changed. And I do have respect for our assessing department and what they have on the books. And if you read the nine or 10 points that are in there, they're pretty specific, and the applicant, in my mind, has made no effort in the town that they claim to be neighbors and friendly neighbors in to go into the assessing department and straighten anything out. So I think it's important that we send this, and we ask them not to consider the letter of eligibility until this is a clean piece of land, and that they can prove that they can do a project on it.
I don't want to keep playing ping pong here, but I will say that I had several phone calls that I received during the process, or lack thereof. And because we have maintained a policy that unless you're submitting an actual plan, they don't have access to the second floor. They have never had access to the second floor. We don't, we've been denying that until it was a real project. So it's a catch-22. I don't know how they could have proved anything, because we couldn't get in front of the planner. But now that they filed something, that's going to move on. What Julie said is absolutely correct. Nobody is going to risk their license by stamping a plan that's absolutely false. I mean, they're going to guarantee with their license that it's approvable fact, that if this thing gets approved, that they have, under their jurisdiction and control, all the properties that are necessary to develop it. We're not there. We just aren't there. And if somebody actually can tell me that an engineer was presented with this plan, and they said, "Oh, no, this thing is all messed up," that would change my mind. But we're not the people who would do that.
Thank you, Don. So is the board comfortable in coming back with the revisions discussed now and having that discussion, or do you want that emailed? You know, I guess, my question is, what do you want to do in terms of next steps?
I'd like to email my changes and then see if everybody agrees to them.
Okay. So that, is that the?
I'm okay if we wait a week to have a final product. Not a week to come back with non-e-mails and no change. But I think we, time is of the essence, and we should send this letter and continue to voice our objection, and not wait two, three more weeks until someone gets around to their edits.
So?
Got them right here.
In the spirit of the, sorry.
No, if I could, Madam Chair, I think what you were going to do is what I'm hoping to do. If I've heard the board correctly, in the draft letter that you have, paragraph number five is to be stricken in its entirety. Paragraph number six, which now becomes paragraph five, board members will give commentary on what it is the board would be urging the executive office of housing and local communities to do, or strike that, and changing regulated to regulatory.
No.
And then, say again?
No, because there are other paragraphs above that. I feel that the tone, we bolded out, does not control, really should read, "We do not believe have control," because we don't have the wherewithal to be able to prove that statement.
I think I understand where you're coming from. What I was trying to capture is where we are presently. There was no disagreement, as my understanding, to striking paragraph five. No disagreement to changing regulated to regulatory. That's all I'm saying. Anything else would come from guidance from the board.
Right. So everybody should send their emails with whatever revisions.
I mean, Don's the only one that did it. Why don't we hash it out, so Joe has some clear direction, and we're not just changing language to change language based on each board member's individual request.
I have no edits, other than.
So, Don, will you read your request again? Because I do believe, based on, I disagree with your statement, based on what our assessing department has to say.
Paragraph two currently reads, "We are compelled to emphasize and document that as of this writing, Mid-Cape does not have control over the proposed site for the proposed project." It's a little redundant, it also repeats itself. But aside from that.
Justified. Times New Roman font.
I get it. I would replace that with, "Mid-Cape does," let me see, just that, "We would like to document that as of this writing, we do not believe that Mid-Cape has control." That's the first change. Because the other one is emphatic. "We know for a fact it does not have control." It's a belief that we're holding, and I believe that that's true.
I disagree.
Okay, well, you show me the plan.
So if we, if we, if we want to vote on the changes, Madam Chair, just so Joe has clear direction?
Yes.
Because he shouldn't change it. But based on our assessing records and our assessor's statement, which I imagine is going to be included, which was updated October 16th, I believe it's more than a belief.
Well, the second one's going to be the same thing. "We enclose the town of Harwich's directors assessing that originally dated and such and such an updating as continuing proof that," I would have put a period at that point, and we say that we also enclose the town of Harwiches, et cetera, et cetera. "The town believes that it shows this to be a false assertion." Again, "believe."
So where is that one? I missed that one.
It's one, two, three, four sentences, four paragraphs down. Once again, it's a didactic continuing proof of lack of sight. I believe, if that's what we're saying, that we believe that that's evidence of a false statement, I'm okay with that. But we don't have clear evidence. It does say that despite this clear evidence later on in the next paragraph, "The applicant continues to put forth that they presently have control of the site." Again, despite what we believe to be clear evidence that the applicant does not have control over the entire site, and then go on with the letter.
But that paragraph's coming out.
Okay, the whole paragraph's coming out, that's fine.
The whole paragraph.
Again, Michael may be right, but Michael isn't right at this moment, because there is absolutely no evidence that the town planner reviewed this, and that an engineer is either willing to or not willing to stamp the plan. I mean, that's part of the Pell review. They need to be able to ascertain that you have control over the property. It's a real simple process, and pretty much anybody that's ever done a site plan review knows that you don't own the property until you get to the point where the contingency's satisfied. So you're not at that point.
So you're proposing in those two places to say?
"We believe."
Instead of, I'm not opposed to that. I have no problem with that. So do you have a problem with that, Joe? Pete, you good with that?
I didn't, yes. I don't know exactly where the hell you were on the last one, but yes. I'm fine with "we believe." And the reason I'm fine with it, to be quite honest with you, I have no problem sending this letter. I don't think it holds any water to the freaking people that are going to look at it. So.
Well put.
Anyway.
Madam Chair, I would still beg the board to send any.
Any edits, I get it.
Absolutely. I can send the Word doc. I use the Tarabian manual for usage. I did not use the University of Chicago. And anything you want to change, go right ahead and change. There's no authorship ownership.
I use the red.
I did use Times New Roman 12, though.
Doesn't matter about the font. I use the red.
Okay, so.
And then, Madam Chair, then this would come back for the board next week? Is that the understanding?
I believe, yes.
I have to do it tomorrow.
Clear delineation.
Bring it back.
So that's what I was going to say, in the spirit of your December 30th meeting, let's bring it back.
Let's bring it back.
To be the quote of the night, so I'm just going to go bring it back.
That's Pete's favorite comment.
Bring it back.
Bring it back.
Bring it back.
All right.
But I do have the language, Joe. Thank you.
I do have love.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, great.
Bob?
Bob?
Can we connect this week? Can we connect?
Yeah.
So, Madam Chair, I think what's next is the town administrators' report.
Which I'm very happy to.
So several update, well, first of all, thank you for the board in supporting use of earned time, and certainly thank you to Megan Eldridge, who always stands in admirably in my absence, but also the great efforts by Danielle, Natasha, and Angelique while I was on vacation.
Who regrettably had to leave during this last portion.
What happened? Anyway, I know that, so Megan and I met today. She brought me up to speed on actions of the board on your December 30th meeting, as well as some requests from board members. So in no particular order, with regard to cell phone tower revenue as it relates to the trust, Ed Spellman has a draft document that he and I are reviewing tomorrow. He is planning on coming to your meeting next week and presenting that information to you, so that will be available, and the report should be released early this week. Additionally, I'll be following up with Ed on golf reserve receipts account request. I did assign that to our golf director, so I'll touch base with him as well. I know the question came up regarding the Harwich Center parking in and around and near the Masonic Lodge. As I had said before, I'm working with, you may recall the phrase, our old friend Griffin Ryder, so he is with the engineering firm of EDR. He was able to come in over the last two weeks, and he will be developing a plan and cost estimate that I will obviously present to the board once I have it. Prior to going on vacation, I met with representatives from both the Harwich Children's Fund and DPW for confirmation and updates on the town's claim for reimbursement. Claim was filed with Snow and Thompson. Len Cooper, DPW director, is leading that effort, and as of today, he had not heard back from them, so put in another call to Snow and Thompson to get a status update on our claim for $11,153 that related to the circus and the field damage, and correcting the damage. VHB had informed me late on December 20th that they were behind on their traffic reports. On December 20th, they advised me that they expect to send to me this week the North Harwich traffic report. So if we get that this week, it is coming before you next week for a full-blown discussion with VHB and that report. They had then asked for the Harwich Port report to follow soon after, so I explained to them that I would expect it to be the same. If I get the North Harwich report this week, they'll present it to the board next week. If we get the Harwich Port next week, it'll be presented to the board the week of the 20th. And I think that also dovetails, Madam Chair, with the overall discussion on safety in Harwich Port and other projects that are going on, so that's all tied together. I will be reaching out to VHB tomorrow mid-afternoon, if I haven't heard from them, to find out where those reports are. I've given an update, I believe, already on the finance director's search and the next steps on that. And, Madam Chair, I believe when we do the budget, nope, strike that, the agenda development for next week, we'll have deep dives into different departments, and I believe we're looking to have a conversation about both the Department of Public Works and Cultural Affairs as it relates to 204. Are we on track for that for the 13th, or was that going to be a later meeting?
No, I thought that, and also I thought it was for Rec Department.
I, so I can, at this point, I have, I think, ample information on every department to do whatever deep dives the board's looking to do.
I recall the board asking on DPW and Rec, but 204 is not certain.
And then, the only other note is, staff was asking, is that a joint meeting with the Finance Committee?
Oh, well, I actually, that was going to be a question I had for you in terms of, we talked to Finance, and we talked about, you were going to have your meeting after that meeting with your department heads and budgets, et cetera. So we said that, once you had all that info together, we were going to review that, this board was going to review it, and then we would have a joint meeting with them.
So that's one of the things that Mr. Spellman and I talked about on Tuesday, in anticipation of your meeting on the 13th.
Okay.
Is relative to the budget.
Then, yes, as long as we have all that info, I think, I think this board can review it first, and then we could have the joint, unless you think we'll be ready for that. I don't know the board's going to have adequate time.
I'll know better from Ed tomorrow as to what they have present.
Because I think the board needs a chance to assess that.
I would agree with that.
So does this also include all the information with respect to the smaller group meeting with Bob McCready, myself, you, and someone from Finance, that they were asking for information? I emailed that today regarding revolving funds.
Oh, yeah.
Balances. That's all of what we're talking about right now.
Yeah, and so you're, he's going to talk with Ed tomorrow, because we're talking about the different revolving funds, including golf, and then the other part of that that I don't want to forget about.
The golf isn't what I'm asking about. That's a special purpose.
Yeah, no. But, but the other revolving.
All the, yeah.
And then the other part, I know you already heard this, I'm just reminding you, the quarter two of FY '24 as opposed to FY, quarter two FY '25, which was a comparison that Pete had asked for.
So what I expect to get from Mr. Spellman tomorrow is an update on where, so the second quarter would have closed December 31st. Typically, there's a two- to three-week lag between getting all the account statements and reconciling cash. So I don't know that we'll have the Q2 information, but that's one of the things we'll discuss tomorrow. I guess the overall point I'd want the board to take is, as we get closer to May 5th, annual town meeting, the Finance Director and I and staff are ready to start getting into much deeper conversations. I have no objection if you include Finance Committee or anyone else on those. It's really how the board wishes to proceed, how you want to receive information, process it, and then discuss with your counterparts in the legislative branch.
Well, one is, say to board, do you, do you want a week, like, let's have Joe have that meeting tomorrow, see what information you're going to collect, share with the board, and then have the joint meeting? Or do you want to just go right into it? I would say.
I'd go either way. If I may, I think what Jeff was referring to, though, was that the meeting that you had, the Finance Committee member, Jeff, yourself.
And Mr. Kinship.
Mr. Kinship, there was documents floating around that you all kept at the close of that meeting, in anticipation that it was going to be given to the board first and then released to the Finance Committee. Is that what you were asking?
That's it. That's this.
Yeah, that got circulated.
It got circulated.
I thought that we shared that information.
I haven't got it.
Yeah, it was, you know, I know, because I made sure that that got circulated to the board.
I'm just making sure it got circulated to FinCom as well.
Right. Right, to FinCom.
And then, the la, during the joint meeting, their ask was for the revolving fund...
Right.
...balances and all that, which is what I emailed today. And I'd rather have it all at one time, so when we meet, we can just do both.
No, no, I agree.
Yeah, with Bob McCready and myself.
I just wanted the board to have that as well.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yep, yes.
I think we're all on the same page.
We are.
Just saying it.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead, Don.
And this is to your report, actually. If it helped, first of all, if it helps anything, as you know, we had practiced for a while, we haven't dispersed any money from the Pol Fund as a board to a project, so that was one way that you could flush out money. But we had each year voted to float whatever we decided to float, whether the entire amount or almost the entire amount, from that, over to the trust's jurisdiction. I know, when Eric's looking at that, I know for fact we haven't done that in two years. It may be three, but it's at least two. So, that might be helpful to them, because if the money's not showing up, except for the last fiscal year, then something wasn't happening automatically, it wasn't rolling forward.
So, I, and it's now Mr. Spellman that's doing it, because it's accounting. I think he's captured that, but that's what we'll review tomorrow.
I just thought I'd mention that as it, as one of your clues, because if the magnitude's only a one-year contract payment, then you know it's not rolling.
I think what was throwing staff off was the reference to Flag Fund.
Well, the other way of talking about it is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is how it was named in 2004, and I don't wanna confuse this even more.
And then, Madam Chair, I, oops, I apologize, sorry.
Yeah, there's one other thing that you didn't capture. I brought it up again, there, and now I'm seeing this on posts on media, the unbilled portion of approved capital projects. You know, we voted to approve them, they haven't hit the tax bills yet, and there's generally a lapse, it's a year, maybe two years at times. We were looking for what that might be. Obviously, part of it just hit, because people are saying, "Well, my taxes went way up," which is true, and again, that has to do with both Prop 2 and 1/2 and your assessment, but also, what'd you guys vote for to raise your own taxes? But there's an amount of money out there where we've approved for projects that haven't actually been borrowed so that they can show up.
So, if I could, I heard capital, I think what you're getting to more accurately is borrowings...
Yes.
...that have been authorized.
Yeah.
So, that is something that Mr. Spellman can speak to. I'll bring it up with him tomorrow to see if he has, because I know there's a required debt statement report that had to go in with the request for free cash approval, so I know there's documentation that they have available. I couldn't speak to it coherently presently, but I think we have that.
Yeah, and what I, my pointing out is, it's a accrued liability, because we did...
Correct.
We did approve the project, we said we were going to start building people when we took out the loan.
Mm-hmm.
But people just seem not to understand what that, what they have, and before we get to another town meeting where they lather something above that on, I'd like them to know what hasn't shown up to count their bills yet.
And if we're saying the same thing, I believe the finance folks refer to it as authorized but unissued.
Yes.
So, we have authorized and issued, we'll have authorized and unissued, so I'll...
Saying the same thing.
Yep.
Say, I told you.
Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Pete, Blackboard member report.
My head is just spinning. I get so many problems. Joe, because I know you know this answer, I'll top your head. What's the, what's the timeframe that the budget has to be presented to the board?
So, according to the charter, it is, I believe, the second Tuesday in February is the latest that it can be presented to you. The thing that has always motivated me is, the charter then says you have it for 10 days. And so, it's, it's always for me, by the end of February, at the very latest, it's going to the Finance Committee whether or not you've made changes. So, what I've been striving to do this round, if you will, is get it to you in January. We, we don't tell the Finance Committee that it's been formally presented to the Select Board, therefore, the clock doesn't start under the charter.
Well, you can send it as a draft, right? Isn't that what we talked about?
Correct. I would agree with that.
As a draft to the board, and then the 10 days just hasn't started.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Very good.
If I may, for the record? Thank you for the nod.
Perfect.
You can bring it back.
Uh, yeah. That's all I have. My other items are covered, so I appreciate that info on those other items. Thanks.
I just wanna wish everybody a Happy New Year, since we just entered a new year. That's it.
I have nothing.
Looking for an update on the Land of Low Value auction, and then, unspent article money. I know we've done work on that, but unspent article money, so we can have a conversation on, on whether we give that back, or what we're planning on reusing it for. And now that the community center carpeting is done, we can, we can move on with this.
So, let's say, I'm sorry, Land of Low Value...
Land of Low Value auction.
And, yeah.
And then...
Article balances.
Article balances. Actually, that was gonna be one of mine, so thank you for saying that. You said about you could do an article sweep, right?
Oh, yeah.
Right.
The question for the board is only gonna be the mechanism by which you wanna do the sweep.
Right, okay. I had two questions, though, based on the meeting, the December 30th meeting. Are we going to bring the WIF back for any other conversation, or is it not coming back? Because I don't wanna lose track of that if it's coming back. It sounded to me like it wasn't coming back, so I just want confirmation, either way.
Be happy to answer that, Madam Chair. I, I had asked the board for their temperature on whether they wanted it to be brought back in the short term, i.e. prior to town meeting, or after.
Right.
And I, I didn't get a, a sense that it was gonna, they were interested in having it come back before annual town meeting, so it's a, it's a longer...